Oh, Jay's here.
I want to call this meeting to order on April 1st, 2025. We expect no pranks today. So no pranks, but the energy in this room is awesome. So thank you all for being here. If we could take just a moment of silence. If you would please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
... United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone who has joined us today. We are always happy to have you with us. We follow a written agenda which is available on our website at SalisburyNC.gov/Agendas. City Council meetings are broadcast on WSRG, our local TV government station, which is available on Spectrum Channel 16 and Hotwire Channel 394. Meeting air times are posted on the station's website, WSARGTV.com. You can also watch current and past city council meetings on demand from the city's website at SalisburyNC.gov/videos. Going on to agenda item number four, adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion to adopt the agenda passes. Onto item number five. Council to receive a resolution and plaque from the Roan County Tourism Board in honor of Mayor Karen Alexander's dedicated service and contributions to Roan County Presenter's Executive Director of Roan County Tourism Development Authority, James Meacham, and Downtown Salisbury Director, Seda Troutman. Welcome, James.
Welcome. Good evening. First of all, thank you all for the opportunity to recognize a great civil servant. I know you've had your chances to do that over the time, but Karen as mayor and also as council was an integral part of the efforts of tourism and economic development. She served faithfully on our board for many years. She was very helpful in forming unique partnerships, such as our relationship with downtown Salisbury, our relationship with the park, setting up not only funding agreements and partnerships, but really just a sense of collaboration that not only was Salisbury integral to Roan, but Roan was integral to Salisbury and how we sold and marketed the community. So upon her unfortunate passing, there was an effort within our Board of Directors led by Commissioner Craig Pierce to adopt a resolution by our board, officially recognizing everything she's done for us. Seda serves as the Vice Chair of the Tourism Board, and so not only did we memorialize that and create a plaque that we wanted to present to the city, but I did want to take an opportunity to have Seda as the Vice Chair of the Tourism Board, the Member of City, to read the resolution into record, so we could have it in the official city minutes.
Resolution in honor and in memory of Mayor Karen Alexander's legacy. Whereas Mayor Karen Alexander represented with distinction the city of Salisbury on the Roan County Tourism Board of Directors for 10 years, and whereas the city of Salisbury and Roan County have been deeply enriched by the leadership, dedication, and vision of Mayor Karen Alexander, whose tireless efforts have left an indelible mark on our destination. And whereas Mayor Karen Alexander served as the mayor of Salisbury with unwavering commitment to the growth and well-being of the city of Salisbury and the community. And whereas through her leadership, Salisbury strives to be a vibrant city, with Mayor Alexander's passion for culture, community development, the arts, tourism, and historic preservation, driving significant advancements that will continue to shape the city's identity, inspiring others to follow in her footsteps of dedicated service to the community. And whereas, in addition to her role as mayor, Karen Alexander played a pivotal role in fostering economic growth through tourism in Roan County, working alongside local organizations to enhance tourism initiatives and establish Salisbury as an original destination for visitors and citizens. And whereas Mayor Alexander's service with Roan County Tourism was instrumental in the creation of new programs, events, and partnerships, leading to an increase in visitors and the promotion of Salisbury's rich history, diverse culture, and unique attractions. And whereas Mayor Alexander's leadership and compassion touched the lives of countless individuals, fostering a sense of community and belonging that will remain part of her lasting legacy. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Roan County Tourism Development Authority to hereby adopt this resolution in honor of the extraordinary life and service of Mayor Karen Alexander, a true Roan original, offering our deepest appreciation for her contributions to Salisbury, Roan County, and the greater community. Let this resolution serve as a testament to her tireless work, vision, and unwavering commitment to the people she served. May her memory be forever cherished, and may her legacy live on in the continued prosperity of Salisbury and Roan County, North Carolina. Adopted this 15th day of January 2025 by the Roan County Tourism Board of Directors.
Thank you all, and it is my honor to present this. I was going to hand this to the clerks so that you guys could have this in the city, just a chance for everyone in the audience to see the resolution from the board, and then it has here put on the plaque for them. Thank you all for that.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Meacham, while we have you, can you grab a chair for me?
Yes. You got me. I think I'm up again.
So I would like to take a moment to thank James Meacham for all his service on our DSI board. James, along with a few other people, are rolling off, but will still be involved. James with Rod Crowder from EDC, Elaine Spalding from The Chamber, Kimberly Steg from Historic Downtown, or Historic Salisbury Foundation. But a few things about James, because he has been there for a really long time. He started serving on the DSI board in 2007. He has been very instrumental in marketing campaigns through support of tourism for a lot of capital projects, which include, long list, Railwalk Alley Development, the Farmers Market Pavilion. You played a vital role in establishing agreements with developers over the years with Empire Hotel Projects, the wayfinding signs for downtown for shopping, dining, and destinations, downtown welcoming signs for multiple communities across Roan County. Not only does the tourism own, but they also operate the Paul E. Fisher Gateway Building in downtown Salisbury, which we all utilize very often. You purchased downtown holiday decorations. You've partnered with DSI on events, with Wine About Winter and Brew Fest with hotel packaging and all kinds of marketing. You've partnered with downtown to highlight any events, business and activities on social media, blogs, all your marketing that tourism brings us. James has always found a creative and impactful way to support downtown Salisbury. It does not go unnoticed. You and your team really have made downtown a destination, and hopefully you're just taking a short break from the DSI board, and we can get you back to help us on this. So we just want to say thank you so much from us for all the service that you've done specifically to help Salisbury, because we know that you've served the entire county, but you've really helped Salisbury. So thank you so much, James.
Thank you. That's very kind of you. Thank you.
And again, thank you to the Tourism Department and Roan County for recognizing Mayor. She'll always be Mayor. That's just what we call her. But Karen will continue to be missed, and we're very thankful and appreciative to have her family here, her husband Henry, son Daniel, and daughter and all for being here tonight. So thank you all so much. You are hopefully welcome anytime you want to be here. So thank you all. All right, moving on. Looks like Seda is still up. Council to recognize the Public Works Department for being named Salisbury's Main Street Champion at the 2025 North Carolina Main Street Conference. Take it away, Seda.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I have the honor to stay up here and recognize our Public Works Department. For a little background, annually, North Carolina Main Street asks for nominations for people who have impacted their community, and they have to represent individuals or groups whose dedication and tireless efforts have contributed significantly to the success of downtown revitalization in the community. Since 2000, there have been 962 Main Street Champions named, 47 of which were named just in March at the 2025 Main Street Conference. And we got to celebrate Public Works in Mooresville this year, where they hosted the conference. But I wanted to take a moment, because we're celebrating their outstanding contributions to downtown revitalization and community building, and if I could take a moment to read the nomination that was submitted for Public Works, I think it's important for the community to hear just how impactful they are. So downtown Salisbury is proud to nominate the city of Salisbury Public Works Department as Main Street Champions. Nearly every weekend, and on days like Juneteenth, Pride, Halloween, Thanksgiving, and others, there's an event in downtown. This group of unsung heroes goes above their duty by staying as late as 3:00 a.m., cleaning streets, sidewalks, trash, ensuring residents and tourists continue to be drawn to downtown Salisbury as the center for activity in our community. But they're not only there for special events. They make sacrifices in their own schedules daily to make sure sidewalks are safe, potholes are filled, trash is empty, litter is picked up, planters are watered and weeded, and buildings and grounds are maintained. This department shows up early and stays late, meaning most of the public does not even get to see them working their hardest to ensure downtown is looking its best. It's never a question of if Public Works staff will assist downtown. It's simply a matter of making the call, and they show up ready to make downtown a safer, cleaner, more attractive place for all who live, work, or play, making them a true group of Main Street Champions. And so they have already received their award from North Carolina Main Street, but we did get it framed for them. So I'd like to present that to Chris today, and if we could all just honor them as we appreciate all of their hard work.
Very nice. Mr. Green, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, just to echo what Seda says, just my appreciation to Chris for his leadership, and Michael Hannah's in the back, I believe, our Assistant Director of Public Works, and the entire team, just what she described. Come in early, stay late. You don't see Public Works much, but I tell you, they are doing a tremendous job downtown and throughout the city. So Chris, thank you. Michael, thank you. And to the Public Works team, thank you for your hard work and your dedicated service.
Thank you. Thank you, Seda, for the nomination. Like I always say, I can't take credit for this. It's our team. We have a great team, and they do exceptional work, and this is for the department. This isn't for me. So thank you all.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda item number seven. Council to receive an update regarding the 2025 State Youth Council Team Building Conference held in Salisbury, March 21st to 22nd. Our presenter is Communications Coordinator, Kasia Brown. Hey, Kasia.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. As mentioned, my name is Kasia Brown. To everyone here, my name is Kasia Brown, but on behalf of the Salisbury Youth Council Advisors, who consist of myself, Latoya Price, Vincent Hollingsworth, and Jamal Davis. We are so proud of the work of our Salisbury Youth Council members. We had a conference planned early March, but then we had a snowstorm, so we had to pivot. Three weeks later, we were able to pull off this conference, and I'm going to stop talking because within our youth council, we have a lot of leaders. And so I'm going to get up, and I'm going to ask Sam and Micah to come up, and they're going to give you a brief recap of our Youth Council Conference Weekend. So let's get them a hand as they come.
All right, thank you, Kasia.
And as they're speaking, please look at the monitors. There'll be photos on Lou highlighting the weekend as well.
All right, welcome.
I mean, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, and everyone joining us today. My name is Micah Lightfoot. I'm a junior at Salisbury High School, and I'm here with Sam Linig, a senior at South Rand High School. Today, we will share our notes about the statewide Youth Council Conference hosted by our very own Salisbury Youth Council. The conference was titled "A Taste of Time," which lasted from March 21st to March 23rd. On Friday, March 21st, we started the conference by meeting at the Rand Museum. Salisbury Youth Council members helped set up, decorate, and prepare for the incoming guests. Once the visiting youth councils from all over NC checked in for the day, we had our opening ceremony and roll call from the executive team. During the opening ceremony, visiting youth councils took the time to introduce themselves and share a meal. After the opening ceremony, Salisbury Youth Council took the visiting councils on a ghost walk around town, exposing them to the historic and history landmarks of Salisbury. The ghost walk concluded the first day of the conference. Bright and early on Saturday, March 22nd, Salisbury Youth Council met again at the Rand Museum to prepare for the day. After the councils began to check back in, we started the day with another ceremony, introducing the new councils who came in that morning. After the ceremony, the councils split up into their respective groups, and we had three group rotations. The rotations consisted of Team Cake Challenge, Brick Ed, and Escape Central. All three rotations focused on team building. At the conclusion of the rotations, we regrouped at the museum for lunch. During lunch, we had Cheerwine tasting, introducing the unique drink to other parts of NC. After the Cheerwine tasting, the councils traveled to Tinseltown to watch the Lego Movie. When the movie concluded, the visiting councils went off on their own to explore Salisbury and eat dinner. Our council stayed back to decorate the museum for the end of conference party. At the party, we danced and sang our hearts out before leaving for the night. Back at it again on Sunday, March 23rd, Salisbury Youth Council arrived bright and early again at the Civic Center to help set up for the awards ceremony. When the visiting councils arrived, we had our final roll call and announcements from the executive board and other councils. After this, breakfast was served, and our advisors announced the winners of the many different awards. When the ceremony was over, we all shared our goodbyes with the other youth councils and went our separate ways. This was a great opportunity to build connections and promote the fun and exciting parts of Salisbury. I'll turn it over to Sam.
Thank you, Micah. I want to take a moment to sincerely thank everyone who played a part in making the 2025 Team Building "A Taste of Time" Conference such a success. City Council members, your investment in this program is what makes events like this possible. Your support gives us the opportunity to grow as leaders and strengthen our community, and we truly appreciate everything you do for us. To my fellow Salisbury Youth Council members, thank you for your dedication in planning and organizing this event. Your hard work behind the scenes made everything run smoothly, and it wouldn't have been possible without you. Salisbury Youth Council Advisors, your guidance, commitment, and encouragement kept us on track and responsible. You have all helped bring this vision to life. We are so grateful for your leadership. To our Team Cake Challenge judges, we appreciate the time and enthusiasm you brought to our challenge. Your involvement made it both fun and meaningful, and we're so grateful for your support. And to the nine youth councils who participated, thank you for showing up with energy, creativity, and a willingness to collaborate. Seeing so many young leaders come together is what makes this experience so valuable. This event was a true team effort, and I'm grateful to be a part of it. Thank you all, and I look forward to seeing what we'll accomplish next.
Well, thank you so much, Micah and Sam, for hosting. I mean, nine other councils, that's a lot to undertake. So thank you so much. I would ask the council if you guys have any questions for them.
How do y'all sleep after that first night, that ghost tour that took place? There was some screaming and scared to do anything. So y'all sleep well? No?
They got mixed reactions.
That was pretty fun. That was funny.
Well, just congratulations. Thanks for representing this so well. Anything anybody wants to add? Again, congratulations. Thank you all. And again, thanks to Kasia for kind of leading that charge with some other of our leaders. But Kasia, we appreciate you for doing that, and we look forward to the next youth council. So thank you all. Moving along, we are at agenda item number eight. Mayor to proclaim the following observances. Week of the Young Child, April 5th through 11th. National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 6th through the 12th. Autism Acceptance Month, April, the month of April 2025. Child Abuse Awareness Month, April of 2025. Civitan Club of Salisbury Month, April of 2025. Fair Housing Month, April of 2025. Safe Digging Month, April of 2025. And Sexual Assault Awareness Month of April 2025. I do know that there are some civitans in the audience tonight. If you guys want to come up and get your proclamation. Look, y'all arguing about it. There you go. Thank you all so much. So thank you to the civitans and all your work. I look forward to being with you all very soon, and I will present it then as well.
Great.
Thank you, civitans. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, guys. Thank you all.
We'd like to announce that as the 2025, the Civitan Club of Salisbury is the largest civitan club in the United States.
Wow. For those at home watching, since Rex was not mic'd, the Salisbury Civitan Club is the largest civitan club in the United States. Is that what I just heard you say? Congratulations. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda item. The council receives this prior to the meeting to review. I would ask the council, do you have any questions on the items on the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda item number 10, council to receive public comment. Connie?
Mayor, our first speaker is Mr. Tim Norris.
Welcome, Mr. Norris.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Tim Norris, 45, Sales Road. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Salisbury's rapid growth mirrors that of the entire state. As many cities in North Carolina are balancing growth with infrastructure needs, we believe collaboration between a city and county will help address these issues. Initiatives such as lowering the recommended trip generation threshold for a traffic impact analysis and addressing outdated NC DOT ordinances are vital. Efforts focused on traffic calming measures within the city and speed limit reduction on Sales Road are appreciated. A traffic analysis is currently underway at Sales Road and Highway 601, and we hope a traffic impact analysis for North Hills Christian School will follow soon. We expect that these initiatives will provide long-term benefits to the city and particularly ETJ areas. Representative Harry Warren is aware of the rapid growth in our area and is interested in collaborating to address the traffic concerns. We are also very interested in the new RN Rural Neighborhood Zoning, which we think would have been a good fit for the 27-acre Chatham Creek Development on Sales Road. While we are encouraged by discussions and steps underway, we request continued support from the city's planning, traffic, and engineering departments to work with the Chatham Creek Developer to address traffic problems that will occur due to the development. Current and future traffic issues are not speculations, but are already daily lived experiences for residents in the numerous affected communities. The new developments already constructed along the Old Moxville Road area, along with their associated increased traffic, will impact- along with their associated increased traffic, will impact adjoining communities well beyond our lifetimes. So we have to do our best to make certain we get the planning process correct now. It is necessary to ensure that the city provides well-planned, desirable, and safe communities as the challenge of successfully navigating rapid growth continues. Additionally, efforts should be made to preserve the character of existing neighborhoods. Lastly, I respectfully request that no further subdivisions be approved within the northern sector of the county that includes the insufficient Old Moxville Road and Seventh Street Extension Corridor. The scope of inadequate infrastructure in this area is simply too much to handle any additional development-related burdens for the foreseeable future. I'm truly grateful for your thought, for your time tonight, and also for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Leann Norris.
Hi, Ms. Norris.
Hey, Leann Norris, 485 Sales Road. On March 24th, a fatal crash occurred on West Ridge Road. A driver pulled out of a driveway and did not see an oncoming truck. This tragic incident is why I keep coming back to each council meeting to plead for the city to work with the developer to mitigate traffic impact prior to construction of Chatham Creek. I am opposed to the planned two neighborhood access connections to Sales Road. By comparison, Country Club Village with 128 houses has one access to Hawkins Town Road and only one access through the reserve. This does not encourage through traffic. Oxford Station with 248 houses has only one access to Old Moxville Road and one access to Country Club Hills, which similarly does not encourage through traffic. So why does Chatham Creek, a housing development with 94 houses, require two connectors to Sales Road and two connections to Country Club Hills? This is what is encouraging the through traffic and equally makes all connectors dangerous to navigate. I noticed there was not a turn lane designed for Country Club Village, whereas a turn lane was included in the design of Oxford Station. As neither development required a traffic impact analysis, my guess is that the city worked with the developers, asking for a turn lane for one and not the other. The Salisbury Post described Chatham Creek with two access points to Sales Road and at least one access point to Country Club Hills. When the council annexed Chatham Creek, you were provided data showing that Chatham Creek would add 953 daily trips to Sales Road in Eagle Heights. Encouraging through traffic burdens us with up to an additional 3,000 daily trips or more, which is not what council approved. Once the development is constructed, we will live with the repercussions forever. Therefore, I am requesting that the city continue to work with the developer to design Chatham Creek in line with Oxford Station and Country Club Village with only one connection to the NC DOT-maintained road. In addition, I urge you to work with the developer to include a turn lane for safety. We know that once construction begins, if these safety enhancements are not included in the plan, the result is our forever circumstance. Please keep in mind that with the current development plan, all the adjoining residents are carrying a burden far greater than the one you voted for and approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norris.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Jane Smith Steinberg.
Hi, Ms. Jane.
Good evening. I'm back again. Fifty-five years ago, my husband and I built a home in Eagle Heights and raised our children there, and I have been there ever since, and I don't intend leaving. But two of the things that worry me are emergency vehicles with the traffic that we have, especially the Sales Road area, and Moxville Avenue is not as, or Old Moxville Road is not as, as good as it should be. One example that I'm thinking about, concerned myself, November a year ago, I was leaving my son's house, and he lives three houses up the street from me on Windsor. And I, it was when the time changed, I tripped, fell on the sidewalk, and broke my arm. Well, they called the Rowan Hospital, and an ambulance started out. But there happened to be an accident on the north side of the creek where two ladies in a car happened to hit a deer, and the road was blocked. The ambulance was there for them. The ambulance for me could not get through, and I laid on the ground. I don't know how long until they finally got there. The other thing that I'm concerned about are the schools. These families are going to have children. We're in the North Rowan area, and it's my understanding that the elementary and middle schools at North are pretty full, since they've taken up the slack for Knox. And I'm not sure about the high school. But where are these children going to go to school? Because they are in the north area. Are they going to be switched to Knox? Are they going to be moved back? This is the thing that concerns me. The safety and where are they going to put their families in school? We've got three private schools within a mile and a half and Eisenberg Elementary. And they all use 601, it seems like anyway. Today, when I came down here, I was at the hospital. There were 10 cars backed up behind a car trying to get in the parking lot at the hospital. I mean, I've never seen anything like this before because I've been here a long time. And I thank you for listening to me and my problems.
Thank you, Ms. Jane.
Mayor, our next speaker is Trudy Gale.
Hi, Ms. Gale.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for allowing me this opportunity to speak. My name is Trudy Gale, and I reside at 230 Sales Road. I live in the big curve, if you know anything about Sales Road, between West Dennis Street and Eagle Heights. I have approximately 367 feet of road frontage on Sales Road. I'm in my yard a lot, and there's a tremendous amount of traffic on Sales Road. The speed limit in the curve is 15 miles an hour, but hardly anybody observes that. When school is letting out and opening at North Hills, there's so much traffic, I can't even get out of my driveway. It backs up past Eagle Heights from 601. There have been numerous wrecks in that curve. There was a car that took out three of my neighbor's mailboxes and ended up in my front yard, damaging my lawn and two crepe myrtles. One night, a car wrecked in my front yard. When I got up, I found the front bumper on my front lawn with lots of oil on my grass and on my driveway, and I've had to buy dirt and sod to repair my lawn. Numerous wrecks have occurred, even more so, across the road at the Fisher property. They have a fence in that curve, and I don't know how many times he has had to repair that over and over again. And lots of times, these wrecks are not reported because people leave the scene of the accident. And as people who care about the environment, as I'm sure you all do, all of this building is devastating to our wildlife. They are running out of places to eat and live, and it's damaging to the look of our countryside. You may want more buildings, I think our county and city, for more property taxes, but the more people and the more cars, it damages the roads. And like Ms. Smith said, the more people, the more children, and that requires more teachers and more schools. More people also means more crime. Therefore, more law enforcement officers are needed, more jail space, and more probation officers. When I started with probation and parole in 1988, there was a staff of eight. Now the staff is approximately 50 people. So you can see already the increase in crime. And it will only get worse as more and more people move into the city and county. So more is not always better. Cities and counties can put moratoriums on building, and I believe we are growing too fast and to the detriment of our county and to the city and towns in our county. I will close with a quote from a play, The Sweet Delilah Swim Club, that I believe Mayor Sheffield was a cast member of. And she performed a monologue this past Friday night at the 30th anniversary of Piedmont Flares, and I was there. And so I'm gonna, I'm not an actor, Mayor, but I'll do my best. Quote.
You better nail it.
"We are way past the time for calm. You and your times reading, sprout-eating kind, need to wake up. People who don't give a damn about our traditions or our way of life are paving over our farms and building suburbs and coffee bars and supercenters that suck the life out of every main street and every small town. And they won't stop until they've made this country one big homogeneous soulless blur." Thank you for your time.
Did I say it right the other night?
Mayor, our next speaker is Gary Beach.
Welcome, Ms. Beach.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity through all council members. Brought a couple props. I don't know how well that's going to show. But I've lived on, at 320 Sales Road for 38 years, and the traffic has increased over the years by a great deal. I'm right across from the, I don't know if you can all see that. But this is the problem area right here. That goes into Eagle Heights. I live right here. So I can see right across everything that's going on. Like Trudy said, she lives down here on the corner. Over the years, wrecks, I was coming home the other night right through here and met a car head-on right here. It is in my lane, and I had to hit the brakes. That's not common, but it does happen. But like I say, it's just a problem. The distance to the school is 375 yards from here, and from West Dennis Street is 180 yards. Traffic backs up down through here. It has been as far as my house. That's not normal, but it's typical to come around through here. And people coming down from the school, the problem is 8:00 in the morning when the school is in session going, and they don't have buses. They have an activity bus, but they don't have buses to transport the students. So the parents are responsible for getting everybody there. So that's why the traffic jam. But at 3:00 in the afternoon, when they go pick them up, so you got two times during the day. So it's a big problem. And I wanted to read something here. This was, North Hills Christian School in Salisbury, North Carolina currently serves around 500 students.
Excuse me. We need you to get closer to that mic so we can hear you.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. North Hills Christian School is in Salisbury, North Carolina, currently serves around 500 students from junior kindergarten through 12th grade into the co-ed college preparatory day school. They just completed a 15,000-square-foot expansion, which is going to include another 500 students in time.
Mr. Beach, can you sit so we can hear you a little bit better? Thank you.
All right. But anyway, it's a growing school, which is a good thing. Okay, I see it now. But it's going to be, at some point, the expansion of school is currently undergoing a seven-phase expansion with the goal of increasing the capacity at 1,000 students. So you can imagine with the problems we're having now, when they get to that capacity, it's going to be unbearable, actually. But I just wanted to bring out those points, since I've lived there so long and seen the problems and the wrecks that has been mentioned prior. But I don't see how our infrastructure is going to handle it, to be truthful. At some point, something would have to be done. And anyway, that's basically all I have, and just wanted to point out those problems that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Beach.
Thank you.
On air, our next speaker is Karen Lilly Boyer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving me an, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. What I'm here to ask you is to, later in this meeting, when you are considering the moratorium, the landmark moratorium, I'm asking that you please vote against extending it for an additional three months. Mrs. Jacobson needs to reevaluate some of the comments that she has put in her presentation, particularly when she says that none of the current landmarks are cultural. The restored train station, the Bonaparte and DeCandis House, the Empire, the Murdock Wiley House, the Murphy House, the McKenzie Grimes House, the Salisbury Building, all of these are culturally significant. And all of these were, their cultural significance was, significance, excuse me, was addressed in their state reports. They weren't just approved because they were pretty buildings. They are culturally important to Salisbury. Additionally, there are currently three new properties that are already in the landmark process that are culturally significant. The Torrance Hurley House, the McLaughlin Grocery, and the Elizabeth Duncan Coates Wright House. These are certainly culturally important to Salisbury. A three-month continuance of a moratorium would delay these properties for, before coming, before City Council, for anywhere from six to eight months, at the least, possibly longer. None of the concerns that Mrs. Jacobson proposed in her presentation have a direct impact on the designation of worthy properties. It lists publicly-initiated landmarks. That won't make a difference. The study list, everything that's going to be considered is the study list. A three-year inspection cycle on the properties, that's no reason to keep them from being going forward. And the design standards, which of course, they've already made big changes in the design standards, but they've got to stay within the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines. And education and tourism. All these things are important things, I agree, and they should be a part of the landmark program. However, they're not things that should stop the landmark program from going forward. These properties are approved based on their merit, and they should not be constrained by bureaucratic barriers. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Jonathan Barbie.
Welcome, Mr. Barbie.
Hello. My name is Jonathan Barbie, and I am a resident of 101 Polo Drive in the Country Club Hills area of Salisbury, North Carolina, one of the neighborhoods impacted by the rapid rate of development off of Old Moxville and Sales Road. After speaking at the council last meeting and hearing some of the positive statements from members of council and staff, I'm here again to be discussing the more, the new more urban dense housing district to the council tonight for consideration. It is my understanding from tonight's agenda that the change has already been approved by the planning board. Other creative changes to the LDO over the years have allowed multifamily residential in and around existing neighborhoods in the city for years now, and this change will only exacerbate, exacerbate the problems and related to the transportation infrastructure. The only logical explanation for this, that the city's approach can generate more revenue for economic development. I understand that this is more taxable property per acre, more revenue for the city. It would also help inflate property values around the new zoning for valuation by the city. Property tax rate increases and reevaluations have nearly doubled everyone's taxes in the last five years. More revenue for the city has only meant more taxes and higher city service fees for the taxpayers. For many of us, however, we feel that the city does desire growth and revenue and also to continue to promote more downtown area projects, the transformations that are suggested through Main Street America's program. Requests and studies for these projects almost get green-lighted for studies, grants, financial resources, and exposure right away. The Train Depot, a million-dollar purchase tonight for storage. The Empire Hotel funding, paint the pavement. But we do have to make more consideration for time and conversation about the other members that have come to public comment tonight in talking about Sales Road, Eagle Heights, Country Club Hills, and the other nearby developments. My question tonight to council, however, despite everything I have said, is how will tonight's LDO change, change requests affect the permits for new neighborhood in tonight's LDO change, change requests affect the permits for new neighborhood in Chatham Creek and how will they be able to apply for the new residential zoning district? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barbie.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Jeffrey Hoy.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Mayor and neighbor. Um, Dottie and I have lived here a little over 15 years now and we own our home. So it has never been uh, an experience of mine or ours to go through a process of renting an apartment here or looking for an apartment to rent. Um, and I, this last week or two, uh, I'm having that privilege and I realize, of course, that that I think tells us that 50% of our residents here in Salisbury are renters. And um, you know, there are all kinds of things that you learn when you're doing this. It is not easy to uh, go through a rental process. And uh, in some cases, it may be depending upon the management of a rental area, but even so, there are steps that you have to go through that um, were very enlightening and sometimes stressful for me and the person that I have been assisting. So I want to say thank you to the city of Salisbury for having a healthy rental event this last Saturday. Um, and thank you to uh, you know, plan, I guess it all came under the Planning Division, Hannah, I think I saw Jenny and Grayson there, uh, and other staff people as well, as well as the various vendors who were there. This is a very helpful, informative event and I just wanna say thank you for uh, you know, having the kind of staff and the kind of programming that makes this sort of thing available. It just so happens that the family that, that I've been helping, we've been helping, you know, he works on Saturday, so there's a, an attendance challenge for doing events like this, but it's an excellent idea and I commend our staff and hope that uh, this kind of effort continues because half our residents have to go through a process like this. And um, you know, we, we need to be aware of uh, the various steps that are involved in going through it, the connections to the utilities and et cetera, how that whole process works and to try to help people through that process so that uh, we can build and strengthen the community for all of our residents, remembering that half of them are renters. So again, I say thank you and thank you to staff for making this possible.
Thank you, Mr. Hoy.
That's all for public comments, Mayor.
Thank you. So we will now close the public comment section. Thank you Salisbury Youth Council for being here tonight. All right, we are moving on to agenda item, excuse me, number 11. Council to consider accepting welcome to downtown Salisbury signs from Rowan County Tourism for placement in downtown Salisbury and taking ownership and maintenance of signs after installation. Our presenter is Seda Troutman and Mr. Meacham, welcome back.
You got me good, by the way, earlier, so that was a nice little curveball.
We're thankful for you, Mr. Meacham.
I appreciate it. I don't like surprises, so I'll talk to you about that later.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, thank you for allowing me to be up here again, um, to share an exciting project that uh, Tourism is uh, bringing to downtown Salisbury and working with the city on. Um, and we'll be discussing welcome to downtown Salisbury signs in our municipal service district. So this does fall under multiple areas in the strategic plan, but most specifically it falls under economic and workforce development to undertake ventures for redevelopment to encourage economic growth and tourism advancement in downtown. So Tourism um, has been working on a project and I'll let James go into a little detail, but uh, I have worked with uh, James and one of his staff members, Sarah McHalek, on uh, multiple elements of this sign. So they have assisted uh, many communities in designing the signs in coordination with both county branding and uh, for our case downtown branding standards. Uh, they have assisted with location selection based on their experience in other communities uh, with right of way and where signs can be located. Uh, they do coordinate and pay for fabrication of the sign and they coordinate and pay for all installation of the sign. And I just wanna note that this is a countywide project, so other communities have taken the opportunity to get new signage as well. You can see some examples of how they look installed here, uh, but James, I'll let you just give a quick overview of the project.
Great, thank you, Seda. Uh, first of all, appreciate being back up here again. The wayfinding project, the welcome signs are continuation of the first launch of that project, which started actually in downtown Salisbury in 2013, which was funded through Tourism. So Tourism funded all the signs you currently see. Um, we were moving into doing a countywide project shortly after Railwalk, but unfortunately COVID happened, so that kinda delayed the, the capital funding to get that back up and running. As OCMC taxes have developed further and we've been able to secure additional funding, we are in the process of doing uh, countywide wayfinding signage, so directional signs for all the entire county. In addition to that, uh, examples of some of the welcome signs that we are stalling in all the different communities. Given our strong relationship and partnership with downtown, which we do see as one of our key tourism assets and places for folks to visit when they come to Rowan County in Salisbury, we thought the opportunity to provide key welcome to downtown Salisbury signs would be a good extension to complement the existing wayfinding program, which is in downtown Salisbury. We do have longer term plans to do what would be a phase two, phase three of directional signs in Salisbury outside of this municipal service area and potentially different welcome signs, but given that we are tackling all these other communities at the same time, we had some additional funding left over in this fiscal year and so we thought it'd be i- ideal for our board, us to make a further investment in our capital projects in downtown Salisbury with the installation of these welcome signs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So these are renderings of what the signs for downtown Salisbury will look like. There are three options, basically based on how much space is available in the uh, site location that's selected. And then we do have two confirmed locations. So on Innis Street, it will be located in Gateway Park and then uh, on South Main Street, it will be located in Graffiti Park. However, it will be pulled closer to the street, one, so uh, people can see it, but two, so that it does not get confused as a board for graffiti. Um, I hope it's clear, uh, but it will be away from all of those other boards. We do have two other gateways into the downtown, West Innis Street and North Main Street. We're working on a partnership with private property owners for permission to locate those there and those uh, discussions are going very well. Uh, city attorney has agreed to work with me on easement agreements once those locations are confirmed. Uh, the city obligation moving forward will be ultimately ownership, once they are installed and ongoing maintenance of the signs. And I've worked with uh, Transportation Department and Public Works to confirm that taking on the maintenance is feasible when we have these signs. I will note, um, as uh, James mentioned, these are the same material and uh, general look as the current signs that we have in downtown that list attractions and shopping. Uh, and we have not had uh, maintenance issues with those, so we don't anticipate uh, ma- maintenance issues with those, but we do appreciate our partnership with Transportation and Public Works to make sure they continue to look nice.
The materials and the programs are all NC DOT approved. Additionally, they are very low maintenance. The, the signs that are currently in the city are 12 years old and the only maintenance we've had to do is to make some name changes here and there and adjust some pictures, but as far as the signs themselves, they're also breakaway signs. They're designed, if they are collided, to break away per NC DOT standards. And then if you wouldn't mind, just quickly going back to the look of the other communities. So what is being required of all the communities to participate in this program for the funding to come from Tourism is to match the same general look and feel as we have across the county. Uh, that is to be consistent with the original branding standards with the program we launched in 2016. So if, you know, someone would say, well, you know, why does Salisbury quote unquote have Rowan County's logo on there? Every community has the county branded logo, part of it, whether you're Spencer, Gold Hill, Landis, Town of Cleveland, that's just part of the requirement for us to keep it brand specific and standard. So I would basically say with the funding coming from Tourism, there is a little bit of brand requirements and standards we have to be met. Um, but other than that, uh, the design, as Seda showed for downtown, just like the other communities, is very specific to what downtown is using for their current branding look and feel.
Exactly. So it does use our logo icons as well as our uh, font and we are a Main Street Original, which is our tagline. And so our action request tonight is for City Council to accept welcome to downtown Salisbury signs from Rowan County Tourism for placement in downtown Salisbury, taking ownership and maintenance of the signs after installation. However, if you have additional questions, we're also happy to answer those.
Got you. Thank you and thank you, James, for this opportunity. Council, uh, do you have any questions in regards to the signs? If not, uh...
Which, yeah, which signs are going, of the two that you, two locations you have, okay? And are you allowed to tell us kind of what part of North Main and what part of West Innis you're looking at?
Yes, so it'll be close to the uh, boundary of our municipal service district, so um, we are, the boundary of the municipal service district on uh, West Innis Street is um, First Presbyterian and then um, so right at uh, Jackson Street or, I'm sorry, one past that, Fulton Street. And so on um, North Main Street, uh, it goes down to just past Carr Street, uh, about at Ralph Baker and F and M. But we're looking to introduce people as soon as they hit the municipal service district.
It looked like the uh, other towns were outside of their downtown and we're putting four signs basically focused only on downtown. And I know you're the head of DSI, but disregarding that, just curious why we're, you know, if we're welcome to Salisbury, why are we putting four signs in entrances to downtown as opposed to, I mean, we have five or six people talking about city growing wide as opposed to, you know, putting some a little further out.
Absolutely.
So the, I mean, this was um, ultimately a tourism investment decision in terms of our capital program, uh, which is why we weren't asking the city to spend any financial dollars and we're not asking you other than just maintaining the signs. But starting in the downtown was to tie into the existing wayfinding signage system, which is already existing in downtown. Furthermore, the other communities are obviously smaller in size and scope than uh, the geographic boundaries of those towns. So for instance, they have the entrance to the communities is where they focused on because that's where they're wanting to get people to go. If we were to re-sculpt all of the city of Salisbury's welcome signs, which are spread out in various locations coming into the community, most of them are old wooden signs, which are decades old, which would need a complete refurbishment. It would go beyond the scope of the initial phase of this project. So we felt we could make, from Tourism's standpoint, given our existing investments with the trolley system, the Gateway Building, downtown Salisbury, the Farmer's Market and what, what we're doing with the Railwalk, that we wanted to pour further capital into the projects areas we're already investing. And from a Tourism perspective, downtown is the most visited Tourism-specific area within the Salisbury proper. Um, so that was why we started our initial investment decision here. So it wasn't as much downtown saying we need to be here over the rest of the city, it was Tourism making a decision that this is where it made sense for us to invest our capital dollars in this first phase of the project. Now ideally, we would go back and do the rest of the projects around, um, the rest of the welcome signs around downtown, around the city of Salisbury, but as I said, that would be more of a phase two, phase three project. So that would be the answer why.
A minute ago, you said downtown is the most visited area of the city?
From a visitor perspective, when you take in just the size of Cheerwine Festival, the events, the activities, people having, uh, weddings at the depot, things at the trolley barn, and sort of downtown Salisbury is the most visited within the city of where we see the most actual visitors from out of town coming on an annual basis.
For Tourism visitors.
For Tourism visitors, correct. I'm not getting into residential or business, but actual visitors. And with the addition of the Cheerwine Festival in the park, that has excelled that even further.
Got it.
Council, any other questions? Is anyone interested in making a motion for us to accept free signs for downtown Salisbury?
I'll make a motion, Mayor. Um, I'd like to make the motion to accept welcome to downtown Salisbury signs from Rowan County Tourism for placement in downtown Salisbury and to assume maintenance for the signs after installation.
We have a motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Again, thank you Tourism, thank you James for your support in downtown. Seda, thank you for getting us free stuff.
Thank you, Council.
Free stuff. Free stuff, man. All right, moving on to agenda item number 12. Council to consider a text amendment to the land development ordinance to amend chapters two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Somebody in the audience has got to know what that's from, the electric company? Oh my God, I'm not that old. Anyway. To create a new zoning district and to amend regulations on street yards and perimeter buffers, welcome Victoria Bayla, our senior planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Um, so tonight we have text amendment TA 2025 dash O2 dash zero 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 five. Uh, staff has petitioned for an amendment to the land development ordinance and the Forward 2040 comp plan to create a new district uh, called Rural Neighborhood, RN. The district is intended to accommodate primarily residential uses in rural areas at a higher density than that which is permitted in rural residential. The district will allow for development which complements the rural character of surrounding areas. And it's essentially filling a density gap that staff has had concerns over for some time. Um, if you take a look at the densities shown here in RR and GR3, RR is one unit per five acres and the next district up is GR3 with three units per acre. So that's essentially going from a five acre lot minimum to a third of an acre lot minimum, which is quite substantial. Um, concerns from residents in the Woodleaf area arose when a conditional district subdivision was proposed uh, nearby where the design was substantially different from the current rural area. Um, they proposed creating a new district that would resolve this density issue. So staff worked up this amendment to solve the problem and create a new tool for the city to be able to use. Um, and just to clarify, this won't be rezoning anyone's property, uh, this is just changing the text to allow for someone to apply for a new district. And we've actually already had someone uh, express interest, so you may have a rezoning to the RN district coming to you soon if this is approved. Um, I'm gonna hit the highlights, I'm not gonna go through every single chapter, but I'm gonna hit the highlights on the most important differences that you'll see in RN versus RR and GR. It is gonna be a hybrid district. Um, one of the biggest highlights in the use matrix is that this will only allow single family housing, it's not going to allow multifamily or townhomes, so no duplexes or triplexes would be allowed in this district. Um, outdoor kennels or uh, animal services would not be allowed, but agricultural uses would be. Um, in chapter five, that's our design standards and dimensional standards chapter. Uh, in this new district, we would allow for house types and institutional building types, but not townhomes, apartment, mixed use or commercial or public landmarks. And for the dimensional standards, they will be the exact same as are currently in the RR district, with the one exception of the lot width minimums. We decided to try and meet halfway between GR and RR and propose to a 75-foot lot width as opposed to the GR, which is a minimum of 55. Um, and then chapter eight is our landscaping chapter. Um, we have adjusted, this is the perimeter buffer table that tells you what buffers are required when you're adjoining districts. We have tried to keep the same format that is already uh, in our current ordinance. And then we've also, while we were in the landscaping chapter, we did wanna make one other change. It's a little bit unrelated to the new district, it's in regards to street yards. And it looks like it's a substantial change, but it's just been rearranged and uh, it's essentially proposing currently now, if you have a double frontage lot, which is a lot which has a right of way in front of it and on the rear, you're only required to put the street yard on the front. You're not required to have a street yard on the rear of the property. Um, so staff has proposed having a requirement for a street yard on both the front and the rear of the property, so when you drive by on the rear street, you're not just staring at the back of buildings. And then, um, this is chapter 11 and 12, lighting and signs we've just added are in wherein, where is appropriate. Um, this amendment is also proposing one minor amendment to the Forward 2040 comp plan. We have the table of place types with their associated zoning districts. So we had to assign this district to place types in the 2040 plan and staff has recommended the future neighborhood place type and the rural residential place type. And staff has recommended the future neighborhood place type and the rural residential place type. Um, staff finds that this amendment is consistent with forward 2040 policy 4.8.2, recommending to maintain a buffer of trees along I-85 and other major highways and roads as development occurs for sound barriers, tree canopy, and aesthetics, as well as policy 6.4.3, recommending to explore requirements for new development to preserve trees, replace lost trees, and plant new trees. TRC reviewed this at their February 20th meeting and recommended approval. And planning board reviewed this at their February 25th meeting, where they found it to be consistent with the comp plan and also recommended approval. Are there any questions for staff before we go into public hearing?
Any questions before we hold the public hearing? CNN, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Thank you, Victoria. Anyone who wants to speak for or against considering these text amendments, please come up front? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Nice to be here. Nice to be anywhere. My, uh, my name is Wally Armstrong. Um, and I'm a native of Salisbury, uh, and only moved back here about 15 years ago. Some of the, uh, potential growth in Rowan County is in our area where we live, uh, North Woodleaf Road. And in talking to the planners, here we found what we thought was a discrepancy in that there was a large swath of, of, what's the right word? Regulation that didn't allow, as Ms. Beliff said, uh, for something between, something very rural and something very dense in, in, um, in population or in, uh, development. And with some neighbors, we have asked the planning commissioner, the planners, to come up with something that we felt was a boon to Rowan County. The way I look at it, the more options you've got, the happier people can be. If you've got, if you're very limited in your options, somebody's gonna go away mad. But if you've got more options, people can, um, can make a selection that best suits their, uh, their situation. That's about all I had. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Uh, anyone else to speak for or against? You have to come up front, please, sir. We just have to get you on the microphone. Thank you. Welcome.
My name's Richard Lewis. Thanks. I just wanna make a comment. I see all these regulations going in, but I see no definitive zoning. In other words, it says we're gonna allow a buffer. Is that buffer five feet, 50 feet, or five yards? I don't know. And that's the biggest problem that I see in these ordinance changes and ordinance available is nobody has defined the boundaries. They have just, here it is, whitewash it. And I kind of resent that because we have, I'm out in the area of, of Salisbury and Country Club Hills, where they're doing the development. And they say, yeah, we have a buffer. And that buffer is three trees. I mean, that's not acceptable. If you're gonna put a buffer in, make it 10 yards, 20 yards, 30 yards, where people can at least have some privacy. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Anyone else to speak for the public hearing, for or against? All right, seeing no one, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing on this. Uh, Victoria, if you don't mind coming back up. Uh, perhaps we could start with Mr. Lewis's question on the specific of the buffers. I think that, that those are included with each one of the things. So if you could maybe just give a answer to s- to say that it's not just a generic statement. So, thank you.
Of course. Um, so this is our table that tells us what type of buffer is required, um, for each type of development. Um, the ones that you see on the side of the districts, this is the zoning district for the proposed development. This is the, these are the districts for the adjoining development. So, um, say we have a, a development come in, in HB District, and it's next to the RN District. That would require a type F buffer, which is our most intense buffer. And that would make sense because you have industrial coming in next to a residential district. Now, as you go up further, the, the buffers are going to get smaller, um, because they're more similar in nature. Um, so like an RN District against an RN, it's gonna be a type A, which is only an eight-foot buffer because they're, it's the same district. So you're gonna have the similar uses. So that's gonna require a smaller buffer. Um, so the more, the different, the more intense against the lesser intense, there's gonna be a larger buffer required. But if they're similar districts that have similar uses, you're gonna have a much smaller buffer that's required.
Gotcha. So the, your periodic table here does have a number equated to each one of these. This is just a code that equates to, so if you had an A1 buffer requirement, it is an eight-foot buffer.
That is correct.
Gotcha. So each one of these are equate to a buffer?
Yeah, I just don't have that in my presentation.
Right, yeah.
Yes, they each have different widths and, uh, requirements for what should be placed in the buffer.
Gotcha. Gotcha. And, uh, I guess one thing that I would like to comment is as we do grow, um, and as we develop from urban into what has always been considered county royal areas, I think in adding a new bridge gap in between there, I don't know what the word I'm looking for there is, is, um, I think that's a great idea. We don't jump from, like you said, you know, 50 houses on a lot to one. Now, although I just made that number up, God, Robert, don't write it in the paper. Um, it gives us an in-between growth so that it mirrors more as it goes out, as we grow, which is gonna happen. Unfortunately, North Carolina, it's what's happening. Um, fortunately, unfortunately, depends on how you look at it. So, um, I think that introducing this is a, is a great way to start listening and, and grow strategically in my perspective. I'd happily turn it over to counsel for any questions for Victoria, while we have her.
What are you considered, uh, buffers and boundaries? What are those type of, are they just trees, or are there something else involved with that?
Um, the requirements are just trees. Um, it'll specify whether they're ornamental trees or canopy trees, depending upon the type. Um, but they are allowed to use shrubs. There's a certain point requirement. So they have to provide calculations showing that they're meeting the point requirements for that buffer type. They can use shrubs if they want to help meet their, their buffers, but, um, trees are the only requirement.
And for the most restrictive, uh, buffer, how many trees are estimated that are required or boundary?
I honestly cannot tell you off the top of my head. Um, it's per, uh, linear foot. But the type F buffer is a 30-foot buffer. So that's our max width.
And then another question I had is, by doing this new, um, zoning option, what kind of development are you looking, the city's looking to maybe perhaps go in that place? What, what type are?
Um, I mean, wh- what we're expecting is, you know, something more similar to what you probably would see in Country Club Hills, your one-acre lots, your three-quarter acre lots, um, those type of developments. But it's also to, we've seen a lot of people struggle in our ETJ areas with properties that are zoned rural residential, where they have a five-acre property, and they wanna divide it between their children into just two and a half acres. But they can't do that unless they rezone to GR, which may not be appropriate if they're surrounded by other RR properties. So this gives them that, that middle ground to be able to divide into like two acre, um, without going all the way over to GR, um, which makes some of their neighbor, ma- makes some of their ma- neighbors, sorry, nervous, um, because multifamily is permitted in GR, um, and other things that are not typically seen in a rural setting. So it's a new tool, um, that we're excited to be able to use.
Thank you.
I, I have one question, which is sort of about Rick's neighborhood. He lives in Country Club Hills 6, I think. And, um, so I see GR and GR, you know, on your matrix there, your, uh, chemistry table, or whatever the mayor called it, um, is an A, which means that Oxford Station, when it came in, adjacent to Country Club Hills 6, which used to have acres of woods behind it, was only required to provide an eight-foot buffer, his three trees. Is that correct?
So, yeah, eight-foot buffer, and they would have to have a minimum of one ornamental tree for every 100 linear feet. But they would probably also have to add in some shrubs or additional trees to meet their point requirement. So it's not just the one ornamental tree for 100.
What's an ornamental tree?
Um, it's something like, you know, a dogwood or red bud. It's the smaller trees. It's not gonna be like an oak, oak or a maple.
These lots are about 100 feet wide out there, so you gotta have one flowering tree along a, every 100 feet, basically. That's one per house, and that's supposed to be the buffer between neighborhoods. I think we ought to look at the buffers. I'll just throw that out there. I mean, what's, the, the people that own property in Country Club Hills, um, along some of those roadways, um, I think are a little, I mean, on Sterling Drive and on, uh, Churchill. I think are a little shocked at what's happening to their backyards. Just anything, something we might wanna look at.
Good.
Question. Were, were berms ever considered in your, uh, research for?
I'm, they can be used, I think, um, for certain, uh, landscaping requirements, but I'm not entirely sure. Most developers don't use that. They go ahead and use the planting requirements. And, and when you're developing with similar districts, a lot of times, you know, you're gonna have, you're gonna be backing up to new lots. But when it's the same zoning, it's typically the same lot size. And this is where the RN District will help out, cuz you can get so much variation with GR. Um, oh, Phillip's helping me out with my, uh, numbers here. Um, but, uh, you know, GR against GR within the subdivisions, you can have lots that back up to each other, but they're more similar in size. Um, the only difference here is people are used to having woods, and then all of a sudden, they've got a lot of new neighbors that they're not used to. And I understand that. That's definitely understandable. But that's why you have smaller, smaller buffers, um, in similar districts. Um, and if you have, uh, questions, the type F buffer, the largest one, requires, uh, one shade tree per 50 linear feet and one ornamental tree per 50 linear feet. But like I said, that's, that's not the entire minimum. They do have to meet point requirements. So they'll have to add in additional landscaping of their choosing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, um, I feel like that you guys, Phillip, you're in your department, Victoria, you've been, we've been listening to people, and this is a good first start. Yeah. David, I agree. Maybe we do review what is required in those buffers, and maybe we can revisit that. And I think we have to work on that as we start pulling some things apart, getting more feedback. But as we slowly go into this, it's a just jumping straight to, you know, the, the, it's, it's shocking to your point, and we have to respect that our, our citizens are not used to seeing some of this stuff. So I think this introduction of this in-between one, I think, is a great step in solving that as, as i- as it grows. And, and then as we bump up against other municipalities and things like that. So I think that's important. So I really appreciate the work. Um, Mr. Green, anything to add?
Mayor, members of council, mayor, thank you, and I think you said that very well. This is, uh, a great opportunity. It's, uh, based on the feedback we've heard from the community over the past several months. So I appreciate Victoria, Phillip, and the Development Services team evaluating. You hear it's consistent with the 2040 plan, and it's that allows for that transitional, that transitional zoning opportunity. So there are other things that certainly we're working on. Staff's following up on Salisbury Road issues, working with the DOT, uh, looking at other things, um, uh, from the school to other opportunities to address some of the concerns. But, um, uh, staff recommends, uh, this as, um, uh, an opportunity to address some of those concerns we've been hearing, uh, as a transitional zoning opportunity.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, counsel, any other questions or comments? Uh, so I would either recommend a motion for approval or denial.
Make a motion. Uh, the city make a motion for approval. City council hereby finds and determines that adoption of an ordinance to amend the land development ordinance of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina is underlined or stricken herein as reasonable and in the public interest and is consistent with the forward 2040 comprehensive plan. Therefore, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance in many chapters, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 of the land development ordinance of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina.
Post, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Victoria, Phillip. Your, um, work on this, uh, I think you said it best, Victoria. It's another tool. So thank you so much for your always work on this. Thank you, Mr. Green. Uh, moving on to agenda item number 13. Counsel to consider permanently closing certain streets and alleys near Catawba College's Newman Park. Presenters, transportation director, Wendy Brendel. Welcome, Wendy.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and counsel, good evening. Um, so this presentation will be about some streets and alleys that Catawba College has requested to close. Um, it does align with our strategic plan through focusing on healthy, safe, and engaged neighborhoods by engaging with our community to build partnerships that promote and foster thriving neighborhoods. Um, and we've been working with Catawba for several years regarding the area around Newman Park. And they have recently come to us, um, because they are ready to move forward, um, with some plans in this area. And that would require some permanent street closures. So, so what I wanna point out is some of these are unimproved rights of way. So when we say street or alley, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's improved. For example, there's not a road going through Newman Park, but there is a right-of-way. Um, the only-
Make them a right field.
Yep, I'm sorry. I do this all the time with this mouse. The only improved areas, um, that we're going to be considering would be this part of Summit and this part of King. Everything else you see in red on here is an unimproved right-of-way. Um, so back on March 4th, council did receive petitions and adopted a resolution setting the public hearing, uh, regarding the closing today. But I thought it would be important, um, for you guys just to know, because in your packet, the petitions were, uh, that there were many, um, because they got signatures on separate, separate papers. So I did want to let you know, um, who they had reached and who had signed. So everything you see outlined in blue is a Catawba property, and of course, that- So everything you see outlined in blue is a Catawba property and of course they signed. Um everything you see outlined in green is a private property owner and they signed. Um in fact, um the property owner here has actually signed uh so that Catawba could gain their half of the right of way. Because according to the state statute, when rights of way are closed, it's divided down the middle between adjacent owners. So so they have taken care of all that. The properties you see in yellow um are private property owners that Catawba has reached out to extensively. Um this one in particular is an absentee owner. Uh it's a rental property. They did mail packets to this owner, um were not able to obtain their signature. This property owner, they left packets in the mailbox, knocked on the door um and got no response. But we have not received anything saying they are opposed to the closing. And to follow up on that, closing, permanently closing streets or alleys does follow North Carolina General Statute one sixty eight dash two ninety nine. And it requires two findings, that it's not contrary to the public interest and no one is deprived of reasonable means of ingress or egress to their property. The two property owners that did not sign, um as you could see, are not being deprived of ingress or egress. This is one parcel. This is unimproved now. Um their access is from Lance Avenue and then King Street is not being closed in front of this property. So um again, one sixty eight dash two ninety nine requires um advertisement of the closing prior to the public hearing. So staff did post the site um at every proposed right of way closing location. Um we mailed certified letters to um everyone that you saw highlighted uh on the the previous map. Um and we advertised in the Salisbury Post um once a week for four consecutive weeks. Um this is the survey that was provided uh by Catawba College, which shows the um the the areas to be closed as well as some easements that we had requested for public utilities. And the survey also recognizes that when the streets closed, what parcels it will be combined with. So just to go into the easements a little bit um further, I wanted to highlight the public easements that will be retained during this closure. So we are requesting the storm drainage easements. Um and this one's even outside of the the closed area um because we noticed when we were looking at everything in the public right of way, uh we do require that that easements be obtained um on ditches or pipes um that convey water from the road and you can see this does. There's a thirty foot sanitary sewer easement being retained um on the public sanitary sewer line. And this area, because the sewer line was so close to the road, this portion of road uh is remaining open. But Catawba was gracious enough to go ahead and grant enough easement that we had fifteen feet on either side of the sewer line so that we could easily maintain that. There's a public water line in this area. The red boxes um are for emergency vehicle access. So when the street, when Summit Avenue, again, this portion of Summit Avenue, this portion of King Street do have a roadway in them. So when they are closed, we'll need access for uh service vehicles like trash trucks, things like that, um and emergency vehicles to turn around. So Catawba has granted within their parking areas um access easements. I also want to note, we do um send out as part of our notification to all private utility companies. We send out notices that these public uh streets will be closed. Um and we ask for any feedback from those utility companies on any private easements to be maintained. Did have a conversation with Duke Energy. And there is an overhead utility line on Summit Avenue. So it's not noted on the survey, but in the order that you will be adopting, it is subject to a thirty foot utility easement centered on the existing Duke Energy power line for Duke Energy. So that's in the order. Um so unless there's any questions, um your next step would be to conduct a public hearing. And then um if there's, if council feels that we are meeting the intent of the statute and no one is deprived of reasonable means of ingress or egress, you would adopt a resolution accepting the streets and alleys. And then you would also adopt an order closing the streets and alley.
All right, thank you Wendy. Uh before we have the public hearing, is there any questions from Council at this time?
You you mentioned Duke Energy with the ingress egress needs. With the closings, will Duke Energy still be able to get equipment, machinery into those locations?
I I I would, so when this is, well, when this portion of roadway um is closed, there will remain pavement there.
There will be access.
Ca- Catawba would have the option to block that off. So um access would need to be gained through them as a private property owner if it's blocked. But it would be the same with our um public sewer easements and and things of that sort. So the easement is there, so access would be attainable, yes. Also, I I don't want to speak for Catawba, but I do know there are plans in the area for improvement, which may um require some utility relocation in the future. So I'm sure be working with Catawba on that as well.
And that's that's listed in the bottom of this order, about the thirty foot.
Utility easements are at the bottom, yes.
Council, any other questions before we open the public hearing? All right, I will uh open the public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak for or against, please come forward. Hello.
Hello. Uh my name is Jamie Basinger. I'm a civil engineer with Stewart and a uh and and I am consulting for Catawba College on this project and um with the closure of the rights away and the uh development of Newman Park. The plans to do that. So and answers to one of the questions about, well, first of all, thank you very much for hearing this. Thank you very much, Director, for all of your assistance and 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 bringing this uh and and moving this forward. Uh the the paper streets and the and the rights of way that have been over baseball fields and football fields and parking lots. It's it's this is a great step forward. Um the question about Duke uh rights of way and emergency vehicle access. So the, there's a gravel parking lot that is going to remain open and there will remain two driveway, two access points into and out of that that gravel yard uh for emergency vehicle and just anyone to turn around, oh no, emergency vehicle uh uh to turn around, not just anybody. And there's the existing parking lot between Newman Park and and the and the football field that is also has two uh access points to public streets. And those will remain open for emergency vehicles to, when they get to the end of the street, to turn around and 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 exit. For the Duke, uh their poles, their current terminal poles are uh in the middle of a proposed grandstand building. So we will be working with them to have those relocated. Uh but we will, of course, address those easements once we know where their poles are going to be. And I uh I am, I'm here uh for any questions you may have, um if you have them. If not, I'll go sit down.
All right, thank you, Mr. Basinger. Anyone else to speak for or against? Welcome, Mr. Dees.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and Council members. Councilmember Clutz, it's good to have you back. My name's Jay Dees, six twelve Mitchell Avenue, and I'm here as a a friend of the college. Um the college has had zoning council Tom Terrell and due to a conflict tonight, he couldn't be here. Um so I wanted to come and uh just make a couple of comments, but uh I think Wendy's covered it well, that I think if you look at these petitions, most of them are internal uh unopened streets that were closing to clean up matters that were uh that the city uh suggested that we take the opportunity to clean up now. The open section of King and Summit, I think we've addressed the the access point questions uh satisfactorily uh uh with uh staff. And uh and and ultimately, I think they answered the two questions. No one uh is severed from access to a public road. Uh I think both all the closures are uh certainly in the public interest uh as to cleaning up the interior lot lines and also uh to create some flexibility for the college. Before I have to beg off more time, Mayor, I do want to take the opportunity, because tonight I haven't been in front of council in a long time. I haven't been here since Councilmember Clutz was the mayor and I was handling a lot of zoning cases back then. And so I I was admittedly a bit nervous sitting in the back of the room uh to be back in front of of my city council uh as a resident of uh Mitchell Avenue in Fulton Heights. And I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to first, and I I am gonna have to beg off more time, Mayor. Wendy Brendel is an absolute gem for the city of Salisbury. Whether it was twenty plus years ago or last month, she treated me with the highest level of professionalism. She was open minded to conversations. She was knowledgeable in her field of expertise. But at all times, she was most consistent in how she treated me as a professional, oftentimes with a differing point of view and opinion. And she's the standard that I appreciate from people that I work with. And I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to just tell Wendy thank you. It it's 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 a real joy to work with you and has been for twenty or more years. But tonight, and I am gonna have to beg off time, and I I promise, Mayor, tonight being back in this room gave me the opportunity to sit among my friends and neighbors and people that serve this town and serve this community. I got to sit beside Wade Furchess, who was my son's Little League coach and still to this day stays in touch with my son Archie, who's twenty-three years old. Wade's the epitome of a life coach. He he's he's a lifelong coach, a dear friend and and someone who has served this community well. And and I just wanted to say thank you to Wade. It let me sit beside Chief Pop Parnell, who several years ago, a friend's house was on fire and fighting the fire through the night and they were out of town. And I was scrambling to get over there first thing in the morning to see what the damage was and try to assess it and give a report to them cuz they had no idea, they just knew their house was on fire. Knowing that I was coming, Chief Parnell stayed after all the crews were cleaned up and gone to stay and meet me and take me through and then introduce me to the fire investigator, who's the most important person at that point in time, and get what access I could to the house so I could report back to our friends who were half a country away. He didn't have to do that. He was the chief of police. He didn't have to do that. He did that because he's a member of this community and it was important for someone to be there to see it. Graham Corrigan, who I've supported for this job and and respected, is one of the finest young attorneys I've ever met. He's represented our profession better than I ever have. And he is someone that the city uh should cherish, we should as citizens for the work that he does. But representing you guys, uh he's the best, uh and I wish you well with him. Those opinions don't change regardless of what you do. I hope you grant the petitions. But tonight gave me an opportunity to sit amongst my friends. And most importantly, I want to thank Councilmember Post. Several years ago, and I'll get a little emotional, you and I and my law partner Glenn Katner decided to co-sponsor a play in downtown at the Maroni Theater, To Kill a Mockingbird. And we brought together what I thought was one of the greatest producer night audiences I've ever seen up there. It was young and old and black and white and liberal, non-liberal, they were just friends of ours that we brought together to watch that very meaningful play that night. But that night gave me a chance to sit by my neighbor up the street whose son, I ha- her grandson, I happened to coach at Hall Gym and Basketball with my kid at six or seven years old. But he gave me a chance to sit with her and hold her hand in a theater and listen to her tell me how sixty years before she and her friends had to walk up a side staircase and sit in the roost and watch through the ceiling a play on that same stage. And thank you for your service, Councilman Post, in bringing together us as co-sponsors and bringing together that group. It will remain one of the single most important events of my life. Tonight, let me remember all of these great things about Salisbury. And so thank you, thank you all. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Sorry, I went over, but I beg your indulgence and appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Dees, we appreciate um your thank you.
I might add that I worked with Glenn Katner. I worked, I worked with Glenn for four or five years and then left and Jay ended up in the same office that I had been in. So he did a much better job in that room than I did, so.
So the public hearing's still open. Does anybody else want to speak for or against? I think we got a wave of no. So with that, I will close the public hearing and turn it back to council for any questions or comments that perhaps Wendy can address or entertain a motion.
I live here and I walk those streets every day. So I would like to make this motion, if it's okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Post, we appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution pertaining to the proposed closing of certain streets and alleys at Catawba Colleges Newman Park.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
I think there's a second motion.
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt an order closing certain streets and alleys near Catawba Colleges. That's the same motion. Newman Park. Oh, adopt an order. That's right. So this is motion to adopt an order of closing the streets and alleys near Catawba's Colleges Newman Park.
All right, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Graham, do we need to read those into the record or?
No, they're in the packet.
Great. All right, thank you. Uh thank you for your partnership, Catawba College, and I'm sure the baseball players will be excited not to have to wait for traffic to play second base. All right, thank you guys so much. Wendy, thank you. Uh are you, are you, are you ready for the next Wendy, cuz you're still up? All right, so Council to consider authorizing the city manager to execute a real estate option to purchase contract with Bowtie Properties LLC in the amount of a million dollars for the purchase of four thirty-four Calhoun Street and fourteen twenty-nine Hillsborough Street identified on tax map zero one seven, parcels one two five and one seven eight, and to approve a budget ordinance amendment in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to appropriate fund balance. Additionally, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Transportation Department Special Project Fund will also be used for this purchase. Take it away, Wendy.
Mayor, Members of Council, it's okay, I'd like to kick this one off.
Yes.
Let me uh thank you all for letting us bring this item tonight and just quickly, uh city's out of space. We are growing and uh whether it's office space, we have limited uh office space for uh our staff. We uh need additional uh space for warehousing. We have materials and equipment that we're storing outdoors, that we need to store indoors. And we need more shop space, workspace for our crews. I want to credit Ms. Brendel. She identified some property near our customer service center off of MLK. And this is a very unique piece of property. Uh it kind of meets all three of those needs. There's office space, there's warehouse space and there's shop space. There's also additional property. Wendy did an excellent job bringing in uh department um directors to evaluate this space. And uh tonight, I'm recommending that the city move forward and purchase this property. I'm gonna let Wendy go through and talk a little bit more about the property. But um I'm excited about this because of the property itself and the way it meets our specific needs. I think it has long term benefit for the city for, again, that inventory shop and office space. And we've been able to uh And we've been able to work with the seller to negotiate a price below tax value. One last thing I would say, if council approves this, we have some money that we had budgeted to improve some shop space in our transportation department. We would be able to reallocate about $250,000 that, again, council had already approved in the budget. And we would need about $750,000 from fund balance for the total $1 million purchase. Wendy and our team have worked closely with Wade Furchess, our finance director, and we feel that money is available in fund balance and we're happy to answer any questions. And if council approves the purchase of this property, what we'll recommend is that we'll have no one move into this space until we look fully at our office and warehouse and shop needs. And I can bring back a plan to council that talks about which departments will move and utilize this space. So with that, Wendy, thank you for your work on identifying this property and working with the management team on this.
Again, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam and council. First off, let me say I can't take the credit for finding this property. It was staff members of transportation that pointed it out to me. So I'm just the messenger. As Mr. Green pointed out, the property's located at 434 Calhoun Street and there's a separate parcel beside it at 1429 Hillsborough Street. Aligns with our strategic plan through sustainable infrastructure, with the strategy of continuing to invest in our infrastructure to plan for economic and sustainable growth and to properly maintain city assets. So we're referring to this as the Maxim property because it is where a local business, Maxim, used to reside. They outgrew this location and they're still in Rowan County on Speedway Boulevard. But as Mr. Green pointed out, the property's located near other city properties. Our Salisbury Customer Service Center is here off of Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue. This is Mooresville Road that runs in this area and Calhoun Street. So this is the primary parcel with the building and then the secondary parcel that's located technically on Hillsborough Street. And the city of Salisbury also owns currently the parcels here outlined in green, as well as the Customer Service Center. And this blue that you see, the hatched, is a floodway that's undevelopable. But this and the flood plain could be developed with flood plain permits. So that is where the property lies. And it's a total of just right at three acres. This is the floor plan of the building. The original structure, which is the rectangle, was built in 2008. And then there was an office addition, first floor and second floor added in 2015. Altogether, the office area is about 6,700 square feet and the warehouse is 5,450 square feet, or thereabouts. Depending on how you count them, there are 21 to 22 offices. Some of these are very large offices that could house more than one employee. The previous owner did indicate they had about 50 office personnel in this space at one time. Again, there's also the large warehouse area. There are two conference rooms, some flex space that can be used for print and copy type activities. There's multiple, of course, restrooms, storage and IT rooms, and a kitchen. And although we haven't determined what departments could be housed here, it's very flexible and room for expansion. Here's some exterior photos. This is the addition and it's a little bit different than the original brick. So you can see in this photo, the addition on the left, the original building over here on the right. And of course, this is the warehouse area. There's a large parking area adjacent to a couple side entrances with the bay doors. And then on the rear of the property, which aligns almost directly across from one of our entrances in the Salisbury Customer Service Center, is a driveway and another parking And then just a few interior photos. And this is just showing you the various spaces. The finishes in this building are above average, very nice, move-in-ready basically. But any furniture that's in the building remains. And so most of the offices are furnished. This is just to give you an idea. This is the upstairs office suite of some of the desks that are left. This is the larger conference room with the conference room table. Again, this is looking into that upper office suite upstairs. And then this is the warehouse area. And another big plus is all these storage racks, plus some additional racks, also come with the building. So as Mr. Green also mentioned, our city attorney, Mr. Corrigan, has been working with the property owner's attorneys on an option to purchase. The tax value of the property, both parcels, is a little over a million, $1,42,251. And our purchase price is $1 million. And again, the furniture and storage racks convey. We're looking at a three-month option. And during that three months, we would complete our survey, which is already underway, and do our due diligence as far as the structure and any inspections that we need to do. And those option monies would apply to the purchase price at the end of that three months. Now, if the city would decide, if we find something that we aren't anticipating, we could decide not to move forward. And at that point, the current owner would retain the $20,000 per month option funds. So we do have $250,000 from the current transportation budget. So that would leave $750,000 needed from fund balance. And that would be in the form of a budget amendment. So if council is comfortable moving forward with this purchase, you would need to authorize the city manager to execute the real estate option to purchase contract with Bowtie Properties for both parcels for the purchase price of $1 million and also approve the budget amendment for $750,000. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Wendy. Council, turn it over to you for any questions. Mr. Green, any comments?
No, we're happy to answer any questions. I would just point out that this is about a little over 12,000 square feet. Construction costs now are about $250 bucks a foot. If we had to build this building, it would cost us $2.5 to $3 million without regard to the things like the storage racks and the furniture and the 25 televisions and the three refrigerators and carpet and the granite countertops and things like that that are already there. I mean, this is a third. It would cost us at least three times as much to acquire this much space. So I think you did a wonderful job negotiating this and I'm all in.
Mayor, if I could add too, I was able to tour the building, as were individually the other council members. And I was very, very impressed. It's excellent, in excellent condition. It's such a convenient location, generous warehouse. I mean, and it does look like it's just move-in-ready. So I was impressed and I think it's something we should do.
Thank you, Susan. Any other comments?
I think, number one, we knew we were going to have to invest in our Cone Center. I know that's been a concern. Although we don't know exactly what's going to happen, I think this is solving that problem immediately to give a safer, more accessible place, to your point, secure things inside versus a fence. So I too think this is a good investment. I know there's concerns about, you know, we could spend a million dollars on other things. Yes, this is a one-and-done. It's something we're going to have to do. David, to your point, it would cost us double-plus to create something like this down the road that we know is going to have to happen. So again, appreciate the work on this. I know Chris Tester has been involved in this. So thank you, Chris. And then I'll turn it back to council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a real estate option to purchase contract with Bowtie Properties LLC in the amount of $1 million for the purchase of 434 Calhoun Street and 1429 Hillsborough Street identified on tax map 017 and parcels 125 and 178, and to adopt a budget ordinance amendment in the amount of $750,000 to appropriate fund balance.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Green, we look forward to hearing progress on the due diligence timeframe. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. Up next, number 15. Council to receive an update on in-house curbside recycling operations for 2026. Presenters, Mr. Chris Tester.
Mayor, members of council, if I could interrupt Chris. The next two items are budget items. As in the past, I try to bring you budget items, Mayor, as you say, in bits and pieces. And rather than waiting until the budget presentation in mid-May, I want to give you all an opportunity to hear from staff, us be able to discuss some items that we're recommending that we include in the budget and give you all a chance to ask any questions or share any concerns. We're not asking you to vote on the next two items, but we have a couple budget items tonight. I plan to have a couple budget items on the next meeting and probably the next as well to break it out in those bits and pieces and let you all give us any feedback and share this information with the community as well.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam and council, thank you for this opportunity to speak about our recycling program. This meets our strategic goals through the sustainable infrastructure as well as organizational excellence. So what we'll do is we'll go through and give a, I'll give a quick background, department recommendations, benefits and impacts, and then give you an opportunity for any questions you may have. The city's recycling program started with Republic Services on July 1st of 2020. We had a three-year contract and then a two-year extension lasting until this June of 2025. We currently pay around $66,000 a month on average to Republic for the contract. And they have the opportunity each time we do those renewals to go up with CPI, Consumer Price Index adjustments on that. Our annual audit from Republic Services showed that we currently have around a 28% contamination rate. So that basically highlights the need for better education and waste management. Additionally, we're trying to strive to minimize significant increases in the recycling fee while we plan for the program's future sustainability and also align with our strategic sustainable So the department's recommendation will be to renew our contract for one more year with Republic Services. We've already worked with negotiations with them on that and they are willing to hold their cost per can at the same, so we won't have to raise our cost per can. And we'll have a $6.28 per pickup point per month. No increase, again, needed for next year. We'll also, at the same time, begin to work simultaneously preparing for in-house curb recycling operations. We'd estimate around $845,000 startup cost and ongoing operational costs ranging from around $360,000 to $490,000. So the breakdown of the startup costs for the 845 is the truck, the cans at a reduced rate from Republic Services, decals to cover those cans, two new recycling staff members, which will begin about three months before the following fiscal year, and recycling education material. Ongoing costs that will occur will be additional cans as we need maintenance on cans as well as we grow as a city and have to distribute more cans, truck maintenance, MRF fees, that's a mechanical recycling.
Facility?
Yes, mechanical recycling facility. I'm sorry. So that's where they basically sort all that out. Hauling fuels, disposal of contaminated load, camera systems, which will help us manage what's going in those trucks so we can monitor, make sure our contamination rates are low. Recycling staff, educational material, and inflation adjustments. So the keys on our long-term plan impact, this is the quickest return on investment. By year three, we expect to repay the capital reserve fund, the $845,000 that we borrow upfront as the upfront cost. After we've started implementation and get to the breakeven, we'll start to assess the services and fees to accommodate for growth and upgrades. We anticipate having to add another route in about four to five years based off our current growth. And that new truck cost will be offset from in-house operations. Will also give us the opportunity to explore the need for expanding recycling service so we can look at a broader range of materials that aren't able to be collected at the curb. Additionally, we propose to consolidate the waste collection, landfill, and recycling fees into one environmental fee. That strategy's proven successful for our neighboring cities to help better reduce contamination rates and create more efficient operations. So again, the benefits of this, key, high return on investment. Another major key, avoid rising cost. Keeps us from having to escalate our fees and improves recycling by diverting, we basically would divert less waste to the landfill and it also helps us reduce landfill fees that It also creates operational efficiencies. Within the department, we feel like we can do this and be more efficient with it in-house with our own staff. It also greatly increases our customer service. We're able to respond to customers more quickly and reduces our contamination rate. We're able to monitor what contaminations happening quicker and it gives us controls of being able to remove cans, et cetera, if they're being excessively contaminated. So again, next steps, recycling fee's going to remain the same for our proposal of next year. One more year recycling contract with Republic Services to help us get our feet off the ground and be able to bring this in and prepare for in-house recycling, starting in FY '25, '26, FY '26, '27. And we'll bring in two new staff members. We go live on July 26th and we will, with that going live, we will do, propose the consolidation of the waste collection fees to a single environmental fee. So that's all I have as an update and welcome any questions.
Mr. Green, anything to add?
Members of council, I would just like to thank Chris and the team for evaluating this. And Chris, if you could go back one slide, you had a presentation on this at your city council retreat in January. You can see just from this slide, the amount of work that's gone in to review and to plan for this change. And we're bringing it back to you tonight to see if you have any concerns or questions because we need to work closely to implement this as part of next year's budget. So working this into the budget that we bring back to you is our next step and including all these items. So I think Public Works has done a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Council, any questions?
I have one. You said that you were borrowing $845,000 from the reserve fund? What, I mean, is that, what's the reserve fund?
Our equipment fund.
Okay.
So.
Or replacement reserve?
Yes, to replace equipment. Yes, sir. To replace equipment, and Chris mentioned the need for the truck, and so, again, that's something we've coordinated closely with Finance Department.
And a three, three-year payback, is your guess?
That's, that's what we're projecting, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
Mayor, if I could just say that, you know, just at the beginning of the meeting tonight, we heard Public Services be recognized by Main Street Conference for their, the excellent work that they do, and they've made us proud all over the state of North Carolina. And the great advantage I see with this would be bringing it in-house. We'll be able to give our residents the advantage of great customer service that they provide.
Absolutely, thank you.
Again, I think you've, I know over the years I've been pretty obstinate around raising recycle fees and some other fees. So I really appreciate you guys looking for better solutions. That, you know, you're right, if we're at the mercy of another company in this particular area, we can control the cost better if it's in-house. I agree with you. Customer service, we now control it, and we'll, and I think making this plan out like this pretty, you gave us a lot more details in our retreat, but thank you for bringing this back for us. Anything else?
We'll move forward on this, and appreciate that presentation. Next, we'll go into stormwater as part of the budget.
Thank you so much, Chris. And yes, so next agenda item, council to receive an update on the stormwater program for full year. 2026 proposed budget presenters are Stormwater Program Manager Elise Tez. Did I get it?
You got it.
And Public Works Assistant Director Michael Hannah. I've known Elise for years, and I've probably always messed up her last name, so I wanted to make sure I said it right. So thank you, Elise. I'll turn it over to you guys.
Mayor and council, thank you. We're excited to be here today to talk about the state of the stormwater, update y'all on our program, some budget updates for next year, but we're kind of excited just to brag on our program for the next little bit.
All right, before we begin, I want to point out that our program and our budget is all aligned to our strategic plan, key focus area of sustainable infrastructure, in particular investing in infrastructure, and also in implementing our capital improvement plan. So tonight, we will cover a bit of a background on stormwater and how our permit works, and then we'll go over the stormwater fee and schedule, and then also how the city of Salisbury manages stormwater, and then some of our infrastructure projects in addition to our capital improvement plan and projects, and then a brief preview over next year's projects. So, we always love to take advantage of an educational opportunity, especially since it's a part of our permit, but I'm excited to tell you a little bit about stormwater and share with you this great graphic that the EPA has provided us. So essentially, stormwater is any water or, like, rain, snow, that falls, and it picks up pollutants as it goes over hard surfaces. So that could be, as you see in the nice photo, it could be pet waste, it could be oil or grease coming off the road, or fertilizer runoff, soap, pretty much anything that it can pull off of those surfaces, and then it goes down the drain. And then a big misconception, especially when I heard today when I was with 200 middle schoolers, is that it doesn't go down the sewer. It goes down our storm drains, and then into creeks, streams, rivers and lakes, and then eventually the ocean. So that is directly impacting our environment and our water quality around us. So, that is one reason why we should care, but another reason is that we are required to report on it to the state. We have what is called an MS4 permit, and that is a nice, quick way of saying municipal separate storm sewer system. So that's the last time I'll say that. I'll just say MS4. We're an MS4 community, and we, as I mentioned, we're required to report on this through DEQ, and we have to comply with a variety of measures, some of which are public education, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge, illegal discharge and erosion, and post-construction runoff and pollution prevention, and good housekeeping. So, there are also costs to the community if we don't manage stormwater. Just a few are polluted waterways, permit noncompliance, increased flooding in infrastructure. And here are just a couple photos of our community during, you know, those are very intense storm events. But, don't worry, that kind of brings us to our next key point, which is how we do manage it, and Michael's gonna explain kind of how, how our fees help contribute to managing it, and break it down for us.
So, when the government said we need to have this permit and do these permits, I mean, all these regulations, they didn't say how we should fund it. It's unfunded. So we have a stormwater fee, a part of an enterprise fund, and so I want to explain a little bit about the fees, because I know a lot of people get kind of confused on that. So, single-family residential properties, they're billed one ERU, or right now it's $5.29 per month. Multifamily and commercial properties are billed one ERU per 2,500 square feet of impervious surface area. So if you have a school, colleges, churches, businesses, if you have larger impervious surface area, you will then pay a little bit more in your stormwater fees. So for example, that I listed on there, if you have 5,000 square feet, which is two ERUs, you'll be paying $10.58 per month. That is capped at $2,600 per month for our larger facilities, like, you think like the food lines or Walmarts. So those are capped. And we have some people that are kind of confused on what impervious surface area is as well. That's pretty much anywhere water will not penetrate. It won't infiltrate the soil. Think of your asphalt, your concrete, your structures, like your homes and roofs, even hard-packed gravel, grass won't go through, the water runs off. So it's considered an impervious surface area. So, on the bottom of that slide there, you can kind of see the growth we've had. So we've had a lot of growth this past several years. We've gone to this, this past year, 787,301 square feet added. That's not existing what we had, that's only, that's what we've added this year. So we've seen that 83% growth in our impervious surface area. So we're seeing tremendous growth, and that's continuing this year as well, as we look at the, at the trends. So, the other part of the fees are right now, they were adjusted per our adopted CIP and master plan to $5.29 per ERU. Proposed for next year, it follows along with that master plan, and it'll increase 10% to $5.82 per ERU. That's a 53 cent increase for each individual ERU. So for instance, if you have a single-family home, you'll be paying an additional $6.36 per year for a single-family home. So a little bit of background on the CIP and the fee schedule. In 2001, we consulted with HDR Engineering to develop a master plan, and that we wanted to guide our division in implementation of capital improvement projects in support of initiatives, and how to fund those projects. The, the CIP includes design for planning, construction, and funding for 15 years of capital improvement projects. It looks at infrastructure conditions, capacity issues, floating concerns, water quality, and we'll get into more CIPs in a little bit later in this presentation. This is a busy graph, but I just wanted to show you where we're at. In blue is the proposed for next year, $5.82, and showing that reflecting that 10% change. We do plan on looking at the next, with, hopefully next year or the following of adjusting that, because we had some grants and stuff that's came in, and project timelines, so we may be able to look at adjusting our CIP and reassessing the, the fee structure going forward. I also wanted to kind of compare, show y'all comparison that we have to other cities when it comes to their rates. So 582, it's about middle of the road for comparable cities around us. You see Charlotte at the top at $13.09, but we try to compare it to other cities that are our population size, but also our surrounding towns near us as well.
Now we're gonna dive into how our city manages stormwater, and so we do that in a number of ways. Aside from, you know, the larger projects, there are definitely things that are more day-to-day, like street sweeping and maintenance, and that also includes utilizing a nice vehicle called the Vacon, which is essentially something that can vacuum out pipes, or also shoot a lot of pressure throughout the pipes to clean them out. Then there's also leaf collection. So we just ended leaf collection season, that's from October until mid-March. And then we also have our internal infrastructure, that's some things that our actual, our crews do, rather than crews that we hire and bring in. And then we have our larger CIP projects. Then there's also, you know, detention and retention ponds. We have incentive grants to help with private property drainage issues, and then we also provide a lot of education and outreach. And then we're gonna share some fun facts about some of these management practices. So, street sweeping, and this is just from July until March, so there's still more to do, but thus far, we have swept around 480 miles, and that includes 268.26 tons of debris. And just a fun comparison, that's around the equivalent of 168 elephants, or 67 passenger cars. And then for leaf collection, and this would be the, the total amount for the leaf collection season this year, since it's just ended, we collected around 10,465 cubic yards, and that's around the equivalent of filling 3.2 Olympic-sized swimming pools.
I think that's just my yard.
And that picture is actually a photo of one of the newer leaf collection machines, and actually the one that is the favorite of our crew. They, they really like that one. So thank you for helping us purchase that.
And we have one in the budget for this coming year as well. So I'll talk a little bit about our infrastructure projects that we did in-house. So these are all projects that were done, not all of them, but it's a highlight, a few of the larger ones that were done within public right-of-way. So Piper Lane was a big one that we accomplished this year. We replaced the undersized deteriorating pipe. Again, that was within the city right-of-way, and it was having flooding issues due to the undersized pipe. We enhanced the system capacity through the upgrades of the pipe and inlets. We addressed, this was a complex project, there's a lot of utility conflicts in that area, so we had to be kind of innovative when it came to design solutions to minimize disruption to the warehouses in the neighborhood on the end of Piper Lane. So we were excited to get this project complete. Our, our staff did a great job doing it. The next one I want to touch on is Church Street. One of the great things about working and living, or working in Salisbury and is working on infrastructure that's really old. We're a historic city, we have a historic infrastructure. This pipe, I imagine from the early 1900s, but it was a hand-lined granite channel within the right-of-way again, that had sinkhole forming, and so we went in there, we patched up the, the separation that was in the pipe itself, and we put a new lid on top so to prevent that further erosion and surface instability, and now it is stabilized. Next up on our project list will be Robin Road. It's down the street from Cataba College that we just talked about earlier today, but it's scheduled for this spring, and we'll be replacing a deteriorated culvert pipe. The head wall is failing as well, so we're replacing the head walls due to joint separation and structural degradation, and we'll have a full replacement and, for that section there on Robin Road. So total for this past year, we had 45 stormwater maintenance repairs. Again, that is from sinkholes to larger projects you see on Piper Lane. We had one illegal discharge. Illegal discharge is more, is you pouring it, like, again, somebody pouring oil down the drain or changing the oil over a catch basin. Put it on record, people watching right now don't change your oil over a catch basin. But we had one illegal discharge this year that we were able to catch and work with the property owner on, and then we found three illicit discharges, which is discharges that were accidental, whether it be a, an oil spill, a wreck, or a washing machine that's going into the stormwater system. So, we also want to cover the, our stormwater incentive grant. So this is a grant that's set up through the budget process for work that's done on private property, that the city cannot take equipment on. And one of the ones that we wanted to highlight this past year was Short Street. This was an extremely undersized pipe. It was flooding their church, and so what they did is they applied for the grant, were using private contractors to go in and upsize the pipe, reestablish the ditch, restore the, the streambank channel. The project cost was $19,875, and then what part of that grant does, the grant funds up to 50% of the project, and it funded $9,937.50. And so the church was responsible for the other 50%, and thankfully, through all the most recent storms, it's been flowing great, and they haven't had any flooding in their church. They've been real excited for it.
All right, and then another piece of our permit that we report on is public education and involvement. We do a lot of fun, different things with this. Sometimes it's through partnership in the community. It could be with city partners and also with county partners. Some are larger events like Creek Week, others are kind of singular events like Creek Cleanups. Sometimes it's part of larger educational efforts, like Envirothon, which is where I was this morning with all the middle schoolers. And sometimes it's also more involving college-age kids, like, through sustainable business and green job fairs. And then, now we're gonna transition into talking about our larger capital improvement projects. So we have a couple that are going on right now. One of them is our Long Street project. We're working with, wherever there's Ravenel on this. This area had a lot of aging infrastructure, and it is currently on, on schedule, which is great news. I do want to point out, I know the color is kind of hard to see on this photo, but the yellow is where they are proposing to update the, the piping, the pipes, and the red is where they are suggesting putting in new pipe where it's currently not existing. So that's very, like, kind of preliminary at the moment. They're not into the full design phase or proposing full plans yet, but that's currently in process. So at this point, we are past, like, the surveying and the existing conditions. Report is completed, and so we're, we're waiting to get past the design phase. And then Jackson Street, we are working with La Bella Associates on this one. It's another aging infrastructure project. It's located kind of at the front end of City Park, over by Lake Jackson and Henderson and Steel. All our, this is in an area where we're next to two bodies of water, like, you know, City Lake Park, and also the Henderson Branch Stream, so prone to a lot of drainage issues in addition to the aging infrastructure. So they're definitely addressing those issues. We've gone past the kind of data collection and survey. We're currently in remediation and recommendations, awaiting to move past that and into the developing of the conceptual plans. We are running a bit behind schedule on this one, but we're working with the firm to accelerate the project. And then the Lassie Grant update, as you might, as you recall, we were here this last fall to kind of give you, to discuss this with you all. This is the grant that we have, $400,000 to develop a master plan. It's exciting. It's going smoothly. We had chosen two drainage basin areas for this area. This photo is just a tiny little section of those larger drainage basin areas, and they've moved past the initial survey, system mapping, and transferring over the GIS information over to us. We are in the model and existing conditions phase, and then moving on to developing the concept. So we are projected to be able to begin the initial kind of CIP adjustment later this fall. And then on to kind of the preview for what's ahead next year. So our estimated budget for FY 25, 26, for our stormwater enterprise fund is around $2.9 million, with a proposed fee increase of 582. Again, that's a 10% increase from where we're at right now. This budget includes the purchase of a new Vacon vehicle, and the acquisition of a leaf collection machine, a part-time sweeper employee, and then our upcoming projects include Sunset Drive moving into construction phase, Eamon Park CIP project would begin planning and design, and then, again, our Lassie Grant project would begin our CIP adjustment, which would really help with kind of realigning what comes next. And then Mahaly Branch would be moving into planning and design phase, which we will hear a lot more about in our next presentation. So, that's kind of it for all of our program updates and budget, but we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, counsel. Any questions at this point in time? I know we're prepping for ahead, so.
Could you back up one slide, please?
Of course.
That says a proposed fee increase that's two, up to $5.82. It's not a proposed, because it was 529 or something like that, okay?
Yes, sir.
Because it's not gonna, it's not an increase of 582.
No, 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 that's what we're going to.
I just wanted to clarify that because of the way it reads.
Yes, sir.
You said it was 53 cents, is that correct? What'd you say that was gonna be, like, for a home for a year?
$6 and some change. $6.36.
Counsel, any questions? Jim, anything to add?
Mayor, council, I just say clearly a lot of work going on in the stormwater fund. Appreciate the leadership that's being provided and the hard work by all the crews. This is a very important service. While we're required, it's also, though, important, we hear a lot about drainage issues. So, great work by Public Works and the stormwater team, but as we start, again, to plan- But a- as we start again to plan these items for the budget, just want to present to you and to the community, talking about these important projects, the equipment that's needed and the recommended e- uh, fee increase of a little over fifty cents.
Gotcha. I do have one question. Uh, Michael, you were going through some of the projects that had been done. Just what is an estimation of one of those projects? So we, we understand how much, how expensive these things are.
Chris, you meant to help me on that one. Uh, Piper?
Yeah.
Uh, well, Church Street was a little bit less. I mean, we had to buy the box, which is, uh, you're looking a couple thousand dollars for that, but then you have labor and, um, crews in there. So you're looking, I don't know, ten, fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, Piper Lane was a lot more extensive, um, because you had to buy the boxes, the junction boxes, the inlets, the probably three or four sticks of pipe of, I think that's a thirty-six inch pipe, forty-eight inch pipe going across there.
Yeah, we had about, um, around eighteen thousand dollars in material on Piper Lane. Um, again, if you look, it took a long time to make that install. That's, that's October through February. Uh, we had to essentially build a new road for them to get back into because we created a, made their road inaccessible. So we had to create a temporary road, um, while we did all this construction. I have, I, I, I'm, it's hard to give you an estimate of what we spent in labor on that. But my best guess would be we're probably in the tune of around forty-five to fifty thousand dollars in-house on that project. Um, if we'd have contracted it out, you're probably looking at about a hundred and fifty, um, to two hundred thousand dollar project. I mean, we're, we're definitely able to do it much cheaper.
Right.
When, when we, when it's within something that we can't do. But this was a pretty extensive project for us.
Gotcha. Thank you. Yeah, just to put in scope, there's a lot to be done and they are expensive to do.
Absolutely.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you guys. And then, uh, while we have you, Elise, I think you're still up. So, uh, Gen Item Number Seventeen. Uh, Counsel to consider authorizing the City Manager to execute a contract with McAdams Engineering in amount not to exceed six hundred and thirty-two thousand and fifty dollars for engineering services associated with Mahaly Branch Stream Restoration and Corridor Design. This item is included in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Take it away, Elise.
All right. So much, uh, similar to our stormwater update, this project is aligned with our strategic plan key focus area of sustainable infrastructure. Uh, in particular to investing in infrastructure and our capital improvement plan. So, uh, tonight we'll go over the project background, the goals and our funding strategy for it, in addition to the timeline and then the specific action requested. So I'm looking forward to sharing some information about the stream restoration project, um, and everything that it involves. So, um, the stream that we're discussing is Mahaly Branch. Um, it is a quite a large stream within the city. It is in like the northern section of the city. Um, in particular, it's over by Overton Elementary and Knox Middle School, although I heard that they just announced the new name. I wish I remembered it. And, uh, we have already conducted a feasibility study on this stream and project and it was completed back in July of twenty twenty-four. We worked with McAdams, um, firm on it and we're continuing to work with them on this project. Um, it's kind of bookended with Memorial Park Cemetery and, um, Grants Creek is kind of give you, orient yourself there. Um, and to think about it in terms of watershed, which is pretty, uh, important for this project. This kind of gives you a nice visual that it, um, at the top you see Knox Middle School. At the bottom you see Livingstone College, um, the VA on the left, Nova on the right. So it has a pretty far reach. We have around nine hundred and thirty acres of the city, um, drains into the stream. So that means when it rains and all of that water moves, um, it's draining into this one stream. So pretty far watershed. The goal of this project is to restore, um, Mahaly Branch and to mitigate flooding issues. And while we're doing that, also providing some new pedestrian connectivity and educational opportunities. So the stream, um, is impacted by a lot of bank erosion. Unfortunately, um, it's deteriorating. It's quite close to some roads, um, some walkable public spaces. There are areas where the, the bank is literally up against the road. Um, and it's also impacting some, um, existing park areas on the memorial cemetery side. The good news is, is that this project, project is currently budgeted. And in addition to that, it also addresses two of our CIP areas, that being, um, Memorial Park and Park Road are also on our CIP list. And they're actually, um, pretty close to next in line as well. Um, this graphic gives you a nice visual of that stretch. Um, so on the right is the side that's actually that kind of dark building shadow in the bark back is Knox. Um, and then on the left we see the, um, Forest Hills Greenway side and, um, Memorial Park side. And then that road in the middle is Mahaly. So, um, we, just to kind of go over, um, again, we are experiencing some water quality issues due to the stream bank erosion, um, in addition to some flooding. Unfortunately, when we have a, a major storm event, we currently have to close down that road on Park Road, which impacts a lot of the school traffic. Um, sometimes the Greenway side also gets heavily flooded, um, as well. And then, um, so impacting a, a number of things there. Um, but we have a plan to restore the stream in addition to, um, it would also help with the flood mitigation. And you, what you're seeing in those bubbles are some nice kind of ideas. Nothing is set in stone. They're just kind of to give you, um, a nice idea. But, um, we would, especially in front of the schools for the community impact benefit, we would want to provide some outdoor classroom spaces that the, the kids, the students could take advantage of. Um, in addition to some kind of new creek overlooks, we also have the addition of a, a new kind of greenway section on that side to provide some new connectivity because we have that, that's where the covered, um, bridge greenway is over there on that side. Um, so then it would connect to the greenway on the other side. And then because the, the erosion on the streambank is so bad on the other side, we'd actually have to move the stream, um, which would then mean we have to address the basketball court and the park that's currently there. So that would also be a part of this plan. It's kind of like a park redesign. Um, so again, that just kind of goes over the areas of concern. Um, and then we have some photos to show you of what this currently looks like. Of some of the streambank photos and then what it looks like in a major storm event. That's from some photos of Helene. So kind of discussed, we have some nature, nature based solutions, um, to this problem and in addition to the community impact, reducing flooding, improving water quality, protecting the infrastructure and providing educational and recreational opportunities. We do have a pretty strong and unique funding strategy for this project that we've been working with McAdams on. Um, so we would be applying for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, um, to mitigate risk of natural hazards to the public infrastructure. The goal would be to be shovel ready by October thirty-first of this year. Um, we would need to be in order to be eligible for this grant. And it would require an initial investment of six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars and fifty dollars, um, for the contract for planning and design with McAdams. But we would do that so that we could leverage the grant ask for ten million dollars. And with this grant, all of the city funds that we would be putting into it, all of the matching funds would be eligible for reimbursement later. So it's a pretty unique and exciting opportunity. And here kind of goes over the timeline and phases. From April to June, we would get thirty percent of the design and site assessments done. And then from July to October, we would get the, up to sixty percent of design, which would allow us to be shovel ready. And then we would submit the LOI for the Hazard Mitigation Grant. Again, I just want to stress that this is a unique opportunity for Salisbury. We've met with the, um, Grant Manager for the Hazard Mitigation Program. He feels like Salisbury, um, and this specific project is a really strong fit. He encouraged us to go for the full ask for the project, which is ten million, and encouraged us to not phase it out, especially because the funds that are available this year for the Hazard Mitigation Program is a significant amount that typically is not available due to the natural disaster events that, um, have occurred this year. So, um, are there any questions before we move forward to the specific action requested?
Counsel? I'll turn it over to you for any questions you might have. So I, we just, in order to be able to apply for the grant, we've got to go ahead and get some things lined up by October. Did I hear that clearly? Okay. And it is in, not only our CIP, but this amount is in our budget?
That's right.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. Thank you. Counsel, anything else, questions?
Is the grant funding state or federal?
It's state funds.
So it's not at risk of?
Right.
Being cut off? There was a question earlier about the cost of some of these projects. Chris shared with some of them that we're doing in-house, some smaller projects that still around a hundred thousand and up. You can see large project like this, ten million and more. So, uh, it's important and I appreciate the work staff's doing, identifying those outside funding opportunities. Otherwise it would be very, very difficult for us to afford.
Any questions or a motion?
Make a motion if there's no question?
Yes, please.
I'm, I'm motioning to authorize the City Manager to execute a contract with McAdams Engineering in amount not to exceed six hundred thirty-two thousand fifty dollars for engineering services associated with the Mahaly Branch Stream Restoration and Corridor Design.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion passes. Excellent work on this, getting that done, so I'm excited about that. Uh, before we move on to Item Four Thousand Three Hundred and Eighteen, I need a quick leg stretch. So my, I propose we take just about a five minute or so recess. Hannah, sorry to put you delayed for just a second and we'll be right back in about five or so minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
of our one-year action plans for both the C D B G, Community Development Block Grant Funds, and our Home Investment Partnership Funding, and an amendment to the 2020 Annual Action Plan. We'll start with the consolidated plan, which is required every five years. It's a comprehensive analysis that identifies community needs, prioritizes those needs, and then details how they will be addressed. HUD issues a template that all communities must follow, and it's divided into the six sections that are shown on the screen. So, the strategic plan builds from an analysis of data, and I'm going to hit these relatively quickly. In Salisbury, just like everywhere else around the country, demographic trends are reshaping our housing needs. We've seen population growth particularly since 2020, and we know that more is on the way. The makeup of our community is also changing. Like everywhere in the United States, we're trending towards more smaller households. In fact, single-person households are now the fastest-growing housing type. And this can have implications for the type of housing units that are in demand. Nearly half of our housing units are, forty-eight percent, have incomes that are considered low or moderate income. But the good news is that incomes are rising. And you can, this is the chart that I chose to highlight on the screen. You can see modest gains from 2010 to 2016, and then pretty significant gains from 2017 to 2023. And then finally, Salisbury is, of course, an aging community. Thirty-seven percent of households have at least one person who is sixty-two years or older. So, ADA and other design considerations come into play as people age. HUD identifies four key housing problems that we study in this, in this plan. Cost burden, substandard housing, overcrowding, and zero or negative income. In Salisbury, there are two broad findings. Across the board, renters experience more housing problems than those who are, those who own their homes. As Mr. Hoy mentioned earlier, half of Salisbury's residents are renters. And I would like to give credit to the Salisbury Housing Advocacy Commission for hosting the event this last weekend, Rental Health, that was designed to provide resources and give more of a presence of that commission as a resource for the community. And they're just getting started with it. Ms. Annie Boone Carroll is here tonight. She is a member of that commission. I want to thank her and the rest of the commission for doing that. And of course, the, the next kind of overall finding is that households that are at the lowest income are three times as likely to have a housing problem than a moderate-income household. By far, the most common housing problem is cost burden. And a household is considered cost burden if they spend between thirty and fifty percent of their income on housing. And in Salisbury, that's fourteen percent of our households. And eighteen percent are considered severely cost burden, meaning that they spend more than fifty percent of their income on housing-related expenses. If we delve into that data a little bit more, black and Hispanic families are much more likely to be cost burdened than white families. While thirty percent of white households are cost burdened, approximately thirty-nine percent of black households are, and fifty percent of Hispanic households are. Hispanic households, however, are, have very low incidence of being severely cost burdened. And I will note, too, that this housing cost burden, while, while as extreme as it is, tends to have a lag. So, in those data points we're looking at now come from 2017 to 2021. So, they don't fully reflect some of the inflationary rent costs, costs for housing that we've seen during the pandemic. So, here we are. While we have seen incomes rise over that time period, the cost of housing has risen generally more quickly. Though these increases have steadied a little bit in, in the last year, the median sale price of a home in Salisbury is nearly double what it was just five years ago. And rent increased by forty-two percent between 2017 and 2023. So, people have received raises, but I'm not sure of anybody who's received a forty-two percent raise. So, now I'm going to shift to talk a little bit about the planning and implementation framework of the consolidated plan. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the consolidated plan is all about creating kind of these strategic goals. And then every year, an action plan must be developed, which outlines specific programs and projects that will help to implement those goals. The city then contracts throughout the year with a variety of sub-receipients, is what they're called, to actually carry out the, the activities. So, staff's recommended strategic plan goals are, are broad and are meant to be broad so that we can be nimble and flexible over the five-year period. But they are to create and preserve decent affordable housing. This could support programs such as owner-occupied rehabilitation, public-private partnerships for affordable housing, new construction, and down payment assistance. Another goal is to strengthen neighborhoods, and this could support infrastructure improvements or code enforcement initiatives. Another goal would be to provide assistance to public service agencies. This could continue our ongoing grant programs to nonprofits that serve low-moderate-income residents. And then finally, to effectively plan and administer programs. And this could support the staff at the Salisbury Community Development Corporation, who implements many of our, our housing programs. So, during this five-year period, we anticipate receiving two-point-four million dollars in C D B G and home, home programming. And you can see on the slide how that funding generally falls into these different buckets of goals. And this is a, I apologize for this admittedly terrible slide on the screen, but I included it only to show that as we move through the five-year period, we anticipate shifting some of these funds and targeting efforts to, to support the redevelopment of Kessler Mill. We have some funding go to support a Section 108 loan for some infrastructure projects and focusing new home construction near the site. So, now I'm going to shift from the five-year plan to the one-year plan. This coming fiscal year, we anticipate having three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to implement C D B G programs. Staff recommends partnering with the Community Development Corporation to fund an owner-occupied rehabilitation program. We recommend a hundred thousand dollars in support of the Ford Motor City Pride Lofts Project on South Main Street, this, which would honor the commitment that city council made last year to support that project. We also recommend continuing our small grant program for local nonprofits that serve low-moderate-income residents. However, I would note, we will hold off on opening those, those applications until after we've received formal notification from, from HUD. And then finally, we recommend using a portion of that funding for planning and administration. There is a relatively significant elephant in the room, which is that we are uncertain at this moment of the ongoing support at the federal level for these, these programs. And I have no update on that front. But we do need to continue to move forward in meeting all of the requirements and our deadlines. And so, the action plan estimates a budget. I mentioned that. And we've not received our formal notification of our allocation for this year. But in the event that it is substantially increased or decreased, we are required to have a contingency provision. So, this is our contingency provision of how those funds would be adjusted if, if the budget adjusts. So, that was our C D B G. We also anticipate receiving some, some funding through the Home Consortium. Hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-five-hundred is what we are planning for. We will continue those efforts in partnering with the CDC to build new homes and offer down payment assistance for low-moderate-income home buyers. These are two homes that are currently under construction, one of which is being funded with home funding in the Sedgefield Acres neighborhood. And finally, staff is proposing an amendment to our 2020 Action Plan. We were awarded funding through the CARES Act at that time, and we're originally planning to use that money for a small business assistance program. Counsel will remember that we decided instead to fund that program out of the general fund in a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. So, that leaves sixty thousand dollars available. And we propose putting that funding toward continued programs that help to provide outreach and assistance to the homeless and unsheltered populations. So, tonight begins our thirty-day public comment period. The plan is available online. It's also available in several public locations. And we will ask city council to hold a public hearing and consider adopting these plans on May sixth. No action is needed tonight. But I know that was a lot, and thank you very much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Green, anything to add?
No, I just appreciate the work Hannah and the planning department are doing, and this is an important step, getting those comments and engaging with the public. So, great job and completely support the recommendations.
Counsel, any questions?
It's great work, just great.
Hannah, thank you. Appreciate it. Moving on to number nineteen. Hannah, keep your seat, please. And we will welcome Emily Vanek to, for counsel to receive an update on the local historic landmark program and consider adopting an ordinance to extend the moratorium on the adoption of local historic landmarks by three months.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
I would like to recuse myself on this one because of the...
Okay. That's fine. You can just push back. Yep. Okay. Thank you, Harry. So, we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to rest my voice for just a little while, but before I do, I want to thank and acknowledge the members of the Historic Preservation Landmark Subcommittee. Marcelo Menza, Spencer Dixon, Sue McHugh, and Will James. They spent many hours outside of their regular duties as volunteer commissioners. I also wanted to thank the, the many members of the public who've attended our subcommittee meetings. They've been very productive, and we're excited to share some of our recommendations tonight. But we're still not quite there. We're not quite done, which is why we are requesting a little bit more time and to incorporate your feedback into our final recommendations. So, with that, I want to turn it over to Emily to walk through a little bit of background and to discuss our recommendations.
Thank you, and good evening, counsel. To give a brief overview of our presentation tonight, we'll first go over the current landmark program, followed by progress that we've made during the current moratorium. We'll then discuss concerns we've heard about the program and how the Historic Preservation Commission recommends addressing them, along with some proposed changes to the landmark program. City council adopted the local historic landmark program in 2017 as another tool for recognizing historic properties. In 2021, a six-month moratorium was put on council's consideration for landmark designations to clarify the requirements of the program. From this moratorium, two categories of landmarks were created, the property category and the cultural category. The property category is intended to recognize resources for their architectural qualities and are expected to retain the highest level of historic integrity. And the cultural category is intended to recognize resources that reflect the culture and diversity of Salisbury. All thirteen of Salisbury's current landmarks are property designations. A current moratorium on council's consideration for landmark designations was placed in October to identify ways to make the program more representative of Salisbury's historic resources and evaluate how we identify historic landmarks. The current landmark designation requirements state the resource must have historical, cultural, or architectural significance through association with a historic person or people, association with a historic event, possess the distinct characteristics of a style or method of construction, or have the potential to uncover information about the past. Additionally, for landmark properties, the resource must retain all seven aspects of historic integrity. And for local historic landmarks in the cultural category, it must retain four aspects of historic integrity, including location, setting, feeling, and association, and meet at least one cultural significance criteria as defined in the landmark ordinance. Once a resource is designated as a landmark,
Which outlines specific programs and projects that will help to implement those goals. The city then contracts throughout the year with a variety of sub recipients, is what they're called, to actually carry out the activities. So staff's recommended strategic plan goals are broad and are meant to be broad so that we can be nimble and flexible over the five-year period. But they are to create and preserve decent affordable housing. This could support programs such as owner-occupied rehabilitation, public-private partnerships for affordable housing, new construction, and down payment assistance. Another goal is to strengthen neighborhoods, and this could support infrastructure improvements or code enforcement initiatives. Another goal would be to provide assistance to public service agencies. This could continue our ongoing grant programs to nonprofits that serve low-moderate income residents. And then finally, to effectively plan and administer programs. And this could support the staff at the Salisbury Community Development Corporation, who implements many of our housing programs. So during this five-year period, we anticipate receiving $2.4 million in CDBG and home programming. And you can see on the slide how that funding generally falls into these different buckets of goals. And this is a, I apologize for this admittedly terrible slide on the screen, but I included it only to show that as we move through the five-year period, we anticipate shifting some of these funds and targeting efforts to support the redevelopment of Kessler Mill. We have some funding go to support a Section 108 loan for some infrastructure projects and focusing new home construction near the site. So now I'm going to shift from the five-year plan to the one-year plan. This coming fiscal year, we anticipate having $350,000 to implement CDBG programs. Staff recommends partnering with the Community Development Corporation to fund an owner-occupied rehabilitation program. We recommend $100,000 in support of the Ford Motor City Pride Lofts project on South Main Street, which would honor the commitment that city council made last year to support that project. We also recommend continuing our small grant program for local nonprofits that serve low-moderate income residents. However, I would note, we will hold off on opening those applications until after we've received formal notification from HUD. And then finally, we recommend using a portion of that funding for planning and administration. There is a relatively significant elephant in the room, which is that we are uncertain at this moment of the ongoing support at the federal level for these programs. And I have no update on that front. But we do need to continue to move forward in meeting all of the requirements and our deadlines. And so the action plan estimates a budget, I mentioned that. We've not received our formal notification of our allocation for this year. But in the event that it is substantially increased or decreased, we are required to have a contingency provision. So this is our contingency provision of how those funds would be adjusted if the budget adjusts. So that was our CDBG. We also anticipate receiving some funding through the Home Consortium. $127,500 is what we are planning for. We will continue those efforts in partnering with the CDC to build new homes and offer down payment assistance for low-moderate income homebuyers. These are two homes that are currently under construction, one of which is being funded with home funding in the Sedgefield Acres neighborhood. And finally, staff is proposing an amendment to our 2020 action plan. We were awarded funding through the CARES Act at that time, and we're originally planning to use that money for a small business assistance program. Council will remember that we decided instead to fund that program out of the general fund in a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. So that leaves $60,000 available. And we propose putting that funding toward continued programs that help to provide outreach and assistance to the homeless and unsheltered populations. So tonight begins our 30-day public comment period. The plan is available online. It's also available in several public locations. And we will ask city council to hold a public hearing and consider adopting these plans on May 6th. No action is needed tonight. But I know that was a lot. And thank you very much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Green, anything to add?
No, I just appreciate the work Hannah and the planning department are doing, and this is an important step, getting those comments and engaging with the public. So, great job and completely support the recommendations.
Council, any questions?
It's great work, just great.
Hannah, thank you, appreciate it. Moving on to number 19. Hannah, keep your seat, please. And we will welcome Emily Vanek to, for council to receive an update on the local historic landmark program and consider adopting an ordinance to extend the moratorium on the adoption of local historic landmarks by three months.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
I would like to recuse myself on this one because of the...
Okay, that's fine. You can just push back, yep, okay. Thank you, Harry. So we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to rest my voice for just a little while. But before I do, I want to thank and acknowledge the members of the Historic Preservation Landmark Subcommittee. Marcelo Menza, Spencer Dixon, Sue McHugh, and Will James. They spent many hours outside of their regular duties as volunteer commissioners. I also wanted to thank the many members of the public who've attended our subcommittee meetings. They've been very productive, and we're excited to share some of our recommendations tonight. But we're still not quite there, we're not quite done, which is why we are requesting a little bit more time and to incorporate your feedback into our final recommendations. So with that, I want to turn it over to Emily to walk through a little bit of background and to discuss our recommendations.
Thank you, and good evening, council. To give a brief overview of our presentation tonight, we'll first go over the current landmark program, followed by progress that we've made during the current moratorium. We'll then discuss concerns we've heard about the program and how the Historic Preservation Commission recommends addressing them, along with some proposed changes to the landmark program. City council adopted the local historic landmark program in 2017 as another tool for recognizing historic properties. In 2021, a six-month moratorium was put on council's consideration for landmark designations to clarify the requirements of the program. From this moratorium, two categories of landmarks were created, the property category and the cultural category. The property category is intended to recognize resources for their architectural qualities and are expected to retain the highest level of historic integrity. And the cultural category is intended to recognize resources that reflect the culture and diversity of Salisbury. All 13 of Salisbury's current landmarks are property designations. A current moratorium on council's consideration for landmark designations was placed in October to identify ways to make the program more representative of Salisbury's historic resources and evaluate how we identify historic landmarks. The current landmark designation requirements state the resource must have historical, cultural, or architectural significance through association with a historic person or people, association with a historic event, possess the distinct characteristics of a style or method of construction, or have the potential to uncover information about the past. Additionally, for landmark properties, the resource must retain all seven aspects of historic integrity. And for local historic landmarks in the cultural category, it must retain four aspects of historic integrity, including location, setting, feeling, and association, and meet at least one cultural significance criteria as defined in the landmark ordinance. Once a resource is designated as a landmark, any changes to features included in the designation ordinance, which can include the resource itself, interiors, exteriors, grounds, and outfeatures like sheds and fencing, require a certificate of appropriateness, which is a permit issued by the Historic Preservation Commission or staff based on the local historic design standards. This is intended to ensure that changes over time are compatible with the historic character of the landmark. Another effect is that the landmark becomes eligible for a 50% deferral on property taxes, which is intended to offset the cost of maintenance of the landmark and promote its continued use. This tax deferment can also be seen as an economic development incentive for larger-scale commercial properties. The deferment is issued at the county level, and we are aware that two counties in North Carolina, Forsyth and Gulford, base this deferral amount only off of features that are included in the designation. So for example, if a residence has been designated, but only the exterior of the main building is designated, the deferral will only count towards the exterior features and not the interior or the site. So therefore, the total deferment would be less than 50%. We've met with the Rowan County Tax Assessor to discuss this, and these two are the outliers and not the norm. The assessor's office was also concerned about how this would impact Rowan County landmarks, as the county has their own landmark program. This deferment is mandated at the state level for landmark properties. An idea that staff has been investigating is soliciting pledges from property owners of landmarks to use the deferment to support the city's preservation programs, although this idea has not been vetted by the Historic Preservation Commission. So this map shows all of the historic designations in Salisbury, both local designations and national register listings. There are currently 13 local historic landmarks in Salisbury, which are the pink asterisks. And all except for three are located within local historic districts. Each type of designation comes with its own benefits. All of Salisbury's local historic landmarks are also individually listed on the national register or within a national registered district. So there is a layering of these benefits. A primary benefit of landmark designation is the required design review process to ensure changes are compatible with the historic character of the property. While properties in local historic districts are also subject to the COA process, only local historic landmarks are eligible for the 50% property tax deferment. City council has enabled the HPC to distribute grants for exterior maintenance projects for residents within local historic districts, which has been funded for over 30 years. The grant program is not available to local historic landmarks, even if they are within a local historic district. The six-month moratorium on council's consideration of landmark designations ends today, and we want to reflect on the work we've done over the past six months. We've consulted with peer cities, especially Asheville and Winston-Salem, on their historic designation programs. And we've talked with the State Historic Preservation Office. We've met with the County Tax Assessor Office to talk through the 50% property tax deferment and with the county's planning office as planning staff supports their landmark program. The city's Historic Preservation Commission also formed a new landmark subcommittee that has met several times to develop recommendations for the future of the landmarks program. And I want to note that there are many members of the public in attendance at those meetings. The recommendations we'll go over next have been endorsed by the full Historic Preservation Commission at their March 13th meeting. The first recommendation is to create a landmark study list. Concerns we've heard through this process is that the current listing of landmarks is over-representative of properties in the West Square neighborhood and recognized for their architecture. This has exacerbated a perception that the landmarks program is only available in certain parts of the city, including the West Square and downtown, which are both already designated local historic districts. A landmark study list has been identified as a possible solution. And in fact, the creation of such a list is allowed and encouraged by the state enabling legislation for landmarks. The current program relies on privately initiated applications, which inherently limits participation in the landmark program to those who know it exists and have the time, resources, and oftentimes the money to hire a consultant to prepare an application. We have received two pre-application for cultural landmarks, but we don't have any official designated cultural landmarks since that category was created in 2021. Because of this, the HPC recommends using the study list to prioritize landmark applications and publicly fund their designation reports. The city could hire a consultant to prepare the reports, and some may be done by staff with support of the HPC as resources allow. The Rowan County Landmark Commission creates all their own landmark reports, so there is precedence for that. Private property owners would still be able to submit their own applications, but they would be reviewed more contextually using the landmark study list. Currently, there is no mechanism for staff to inspect interior features of landmarks, and there is limited staff devoted to monitoring landmarks in general. As a solution to these issues, staff could conduct inspections of landmarks on a three-year schedule. The schedule aligns with the schedule that deferred taxes can be clawed back if a landmark designation is removed. A failed inspection could result in maintenance recommendations from staff or the need to pursue an after-the-fact COA. In severe cases where landmark features are damaged or destroyed, a failed inspection could initiate the process for de-designation of a landmark, which is ultimately decided by city council. The HPC and city council have adopted updated local historic design standards to allow for flexibility in materials as the availability and cost of materials have strained property owners within local historic districts. COAs for local historic landmarks are issued based on these same standards, even though landmarks are granted a 50% property tax deferment for their continued maintenance. Because of this, the HPC recommends developing a set of local historic design standards specifically for landmark resources that have stricter requirements for changes of materials. Currently, landmarks are not promoted as an educational tool or tourism tool. The HPC has been considering ways to do this, including an audio tour similar to the sculpture show, hosting a story map on the city's website, and creating a plaque program for landmarks. And finally, HPC is requesting a three-month extension to the landmark moratorium, primarily to finish up the proposed landmark ordinance. The review process includes review by the State Historic Preservation Office, followed by the city's technical review committee, before it can go to the full HPC and planning board for recommendations before it comes back to city council. And I do not anticipate that any applications for designation will be ready in that timeframe regardless. Included in the proposed landmark ordinance will be combining the property and cultural category into one category and an expectation moving forward that all proposed landmarks meet at least two significance criteria. The current landmark ordinance allows properties to be listed solely based on their architectural merit. And although that does contribute greatly to Salisbury's built environment, it often does not communicate sufficient significance to be listed as a local historic landmark. There are other programs, including national register listing, that can be pursued for architectural merit alone. The proposed ordinance will also establish processes for adding properties to the landmark study list, publicly initiating landmark reports, and process for de-designating a landmark, which is not currently in the ordinance. Tonight, we ask for feedback on these recommendations and then for you all to consider a three-month extension of the landmark moratorium. And of course, Hannah and I are here if there's any questions.
Thank you, Emily and Hannah. I'll turn it over to council for any questions, comments.
I'm really impressed with what you've done here, how deep you've dug. And I guess one question I have is, is three months enough to do everything you said you want to do? I mean, I presume you've marched part of the way down that road so far.
I'll take this one. So the three months, that's a great question, Councilmember Post. The three months would be enough time for us to march through the process to adopt the ordinance, ordinance changes. Some of the other recommendations will obviously take much longer, such as creating the study list and implementing some of those educational opportunities. So there's kind of two parts. There's the ordinance requirement, ordinance amendments, and then there's also kind of more of the process programming changes that we are hoping to implement in future years.
I mean, one of, excuse me. This red code pollen thing is attacking me, has been attacking me for about a week and a half. One of the things that you said in there was that some cities have self-application procedures, so you don't have to hire a consultant and all that. Is that going to be part of your recommendation? I mean, I, I mean, do you have the manpower to deal with it? If somebody just walks up and says, here, I have this, you can check the 687 boxes, or mayor might say 40,312, or whatever. But I mean, do we have the manpower if we do the self-application process?
So what we are proposing is a publicly initiated designation process. So currently, all of our applications are privately initiated. So property owner petitions to the city, applies to the city for this landmark designation. We have not had one where the Historic Preservation Commission authorized through you all, actually initiates, goes through a priority prioritization process and initiates those designations. If we were to try to tackle 10 a year, I would say that would be a problem for staffing and manpower. So if we're looking at more like two or three a year, I think we can handle that, especially. It would be dependent on if there's resources to hire a consultant. As Emily mentioned, there's precedence for doing it in-house, and our Historic Preservation Commission members have been excited at the opportunity to do that work as well.
I mean, what if the HPC came along and said, you know, the 200 and 300 block of West Bank Street, maybe 400 block, you know, are really unique. You know, six or seven houses down the same block. I mean, could they identify an entire block or two blocks and say, we think all of this would qualify as landmark status?
What we would recommend at that point would be that it's a district, and it already is a district, that's celebrated and recognized by the city.
No, I get that, so you, a landmark district.
No, I wouldn't recommend each of them as individual landmarks. Landmarks are typically individual properties or resources, not blocks of them.
Because I can see every house on that 200 and 300 block of Bank Street having the cultural and historical significance, you know, that is being sought, you know, for the designation thing. That's why I was wondering if you could do a block of things at once. Can you, finally, one more question. Can you describe a little further how Winston and Greenswood, Guilford County and Forsyth County are doing this, where they just look at the exterior and deduct out the value of the interior of a house? And I'd like somebody to do an appraisal of my house, just the outside compared to the inside, and deduct the land cost. I mean, how does that work?
Yeah, I'm not a property tax assessor by any means. But that was just an example of one. So if there was a commercial building that's being designated as a landmark in those counties, oftentimes what they'll do is only count the value of the structure itself and not the land that it's on, because the land is not really part of the landmark designation.
And our tax assessor, if you can go look up your tax assessment, it'll give you value of your land and evaluate the structure.
And it's easier if you're designating the whole structure in those counties, because they can say, okay, it's 50% of the structure's value. But it gets more difficult if you say, okay, I'm going to designate this mantle and the front door. You say, what's the value of those when it comes to the tax assessor? And it sounds like their tax assessor office is equipped to deal with these things. When I asked the planning staff there, they said the county tax assessor has some way of figuring out what those values are. So I, yeah.
And I would just add that our tax assessor has been wonderful in having these conversations with us. He's been very open to meeting with us and reaching out to his fellow colleagues across the state to get their opinions on the matter. And so I want to commend his efforts. And I think, you know, he's being conservative in his approach. These are the only two places that we found that were doing things a little differently. And he has to be concerned about appeals, so we understand.
Thanks. Any other questions from council?
I guess my concern is, like, do we have to have the moratorium to keep doing the work? We've already done a moratorium. I don't want to send a message that we're not wanting to do this. It feels like that's been the last two years kind of how it's gone. And my, that's how I see it. It's a path we're on. It started in 2017. It's not necessarily a bad thing. I think the thing is, are we doing it the right way? What does it take involving, you know, HPC and things like that? I think to David's point, is that enough time? And you're like, well, so then it could be moratorium forever if we look at it like that. So is that literally needed to make sure we get that ordinance right? Is that the press on this? Or is it the other stuff, like making the study list that we're working on? I mean, help me say, help me justify why I would say this, just wait a minute.
We mapped out the three months, looking at all of the different procedural steps and notifications that would be needed. So it is, I think, gives us a little bit of wiggle room in case, you know, a meeting gets canceled due to lack of quorum or something like that. So it gives us a little bit of flexibility. But it does, it puts some pressure on us to move this forward with expedience to get it to city council. I think it would be the first meeting in August would be our goal.
Gotcha.
And, excuse me, I'm so sorry. I would add, though, that as Emily mentioned, I don't think that we would anticipate that any of the applications that we have in the hopper would be ready for city council consideration before then.
And I guess that was my question. And how do we, how do we know that?
We don't entirely.
So do you have anybody that's in there that we have on pause right now?
No, they are all moving forward at different stages.
Moving forward, let's not stop that.
We do have one application that is at the State Historic Preservation Office for their review. And then it would go to, after they're done with their review, would go to Historic Preservation Commission for two consecutive meetings before coming to city council.
I think I would feel more comfortable if we gave them time to answer all the questions they have and to get it the way they want it to be before we make this decision.
Right, I just feel like this is...
Because that's what they've requested.
Just keep coming back so that we feel like this could be better and it wouldn't have to keep coming back every year? I mean, I know we can't ever, don't ever say never, right? Because things change. But you feel like this is significant, needed time to finalize something.
Members of council, if I can jump in, just as a reminder. So appreciate all the work that planning's done. This was basically added to their workload at council's direction. So the moratorium was needed basically for staff to carve out time. And I appreciate your comments, Mr. Post. I think significant work has gone into it. We have a good landmark program. I think you're hearing recommendations that can make a good program even better.
And so, if it takes an additional time to evaluate that and implement that, I would recommend that we take those three months in order to complete the task that Council asks us to do and to move forward.
Council, I'll turn it back to you. If there's nothing else, I'd like to put that in the form of a motion, if I could, unless anyone else. I'd like to make the motion to adopt an ordinance extending and establish moratorium on the consideration of local historic landmarks by three months.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion passes. So, we look forward to three months moving forward, not holding up anybody. Hopefully, that won't happen in the three months. We'll be ready to rock. Thank you. And yes, agreed. That's a ton of work, Jim. It's been laid on top of what your job is, so we appreciate you supporting our communities for that. Mr. McLaughlin, would you like to rejoin us?
I would.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to agenda item number 20. Council to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the upbid, uh, la, 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 the upset bid process for the sale of .24 acres located at 124 North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, identified on Tax Map 016, parcel 209. Presenter is again Hannah Jacobson.
Good evening again, Mayor, Members of Council. We have received an offer to purchase a city property at 124 North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue. And as of late, we've become more accustomed to purchasing property than selling it. So, before I discuss the details of the purchase, of the sale, excuse me, a city manager asked that I review with the Council the steps of selling the city property. So, the steps are outlined in General Statute 160A-269, and I've summarized it in a flow chart that's on the screen. So, first, an offer to purchase the site is submitted. We circulate that request among city departments to understand if there's a continued need for the property. If not, we bring that request to City Council to consider adopting an ordinance, or, excuse me, a resolution authorizing the upset bid process. At that point, 5% of the bid amount is deposited. And then the city advertises the opportunity in a newspaper for an upset bid. And that bid period is open for a 10-day period. Should an upset bid be submitted, we then re-advertise and wait another 10-day period. But if at the end of the 10-day period, there are no other offers, we bring it to City Council, and you can either award or reject the highest bid. So, this is, I'm just going to go over one of these examples. So, say the city receives an offer to purchase a property for $10,000. That 5% bid deposit is $500. And an upset bid would be 10% of the first $1,000. So, that would be $100, plus 5% of the remaining balance. In this scenario, that's $450. So, in order to be considered a qualified upset bid, somebody would need to offer $10,550. The city owns quite a bit of real estate that are both in active use and those that we are holding for a variety of reasons. An ongoing goal of the city has always been to keep an organized inventory that catalogs things like site history, site attributes, the developable status, its intended future use, and then a primary department to contact. We are currently working on that project to create a web-based map that would help to summarize that information. Want to give a kudos to our GIS manager Levi Coldiron for taking the lead on that project. But we do have a current offer to purchase a property at 124 North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue. Abraham Hernandez Espinoza has offered $6,000 and has submitted a bid deposit of $300. Parcel is .24 acres, and it's about a block off of East Innis Street. For a little context, this is the McDonald's, and this is the Taco Bell. And the property is here at the corner of East Council Street and North Martin Luther King. It has a tax value of $9,200, zoned corridor mixed use. As you can see on this map, it is highly encumbered by floodplain. There is a stream that bisects the property. And there is also sewer infrastructure that is currently at the corner of the site. Mr. Hernandez Espinoza owns the adjacent properties, kind of all the way around. So, the request, as I mentioned, has been reviewed by applicable city departments. There's been no objection. However, as a condition of closing, it's included within the offer to purchase. We are requiring that the, whoever pays, whoever is the highest bidder performs and pays for a survey of the site, and that a 30-foot-on-center easement of the sewer infrastructure would be required. With that, City Council, our request for tonight is for City Council to adopt that resolution that would authorize the sale of parcel 016209 using the upset bid process, which is outlined in NCGS 160A-269. I flew through that, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question for Graham. If we had a, a policy of, would, would it be inappropriate to have a policy that indicated that we're, as a general rule, not going to sell below tax value? I mean, can you have a policy like that that would, that would attach to an ordinance?
I think you, I don't see any prohibition on having that, because you have full discretion of whether to sell it at all. So, you put conditions on the sale. So, if you wanted to establish in a policy that we're not going to sell it below tax value, then you could point to that if it ever came in. I mean, the, the purpose of this process is to get fair market value as defined by this process. But it doesn't restrict your discretion to award the bid or not.
But theoretically, I could go online and look City of Salisbury up and find our 312 properties and say, "Hey, I like that one. I think I'll put a, you know, a deposit down in the city," and then come to the City Council, go through the process without the public knowing about it, because we didn't announce it was for sale. It was just somebody that wanted that property, right?
Right.
In this case, we didn't, we haven't indicated any interest in selling, and it's just that somebody came to us. That's why I was suggesting, you know, that, I don't know if Council has an appetite to have a, a policy so that people don't just come along and start making bids on property.
Just to add a little bit of what Hannah said. I mean, that's the point of this process, is to kind of more formalize these things rather than getting these calls. And so, in addition to this, now we have forms that go along with these and kind of the, the solicitation of feedback from the departments to, to make a recommendation to Council. But if Council wants the recommendation to be a baseline tax value number before we'd even consider it, I think we can establish that as part of the process.
What was the tax value on the property we just bought? We paid $1 million. Was the tax value like 1.5 million?
No, it was $1,600.
$1,45,000.
So, we, we paid 98% of tax value, something like that? And here you had a seller that really wanted to sell it. And we, we had a motivated seller. He had moved. He was sitting on a vacant building, you know, all that stuff.
That's correct.
So, anyway, I don't know how Council feels about that, but I don't know if you-
Something we can definitely talk about. I think there's also concerns. A flip side of that, sometimes if we're working on a project, then we might want to sell something below value to get a project moving. So-
Of course. If, if, if we initiate it, it's one thing if we initiate it. It's another thing when the buyer comes to us with the, with the 10 days for us to announce it here, three and a half hours into a meeting, and for the public to be listening, and somebody saying, "Hey, wait a minute," you know? I want to jump in on that.
Yeah. Again, that's something that we can evaluate and bring back. And if Council doesn't want to move forward on the upset bid process on this one, we, we don't have to. That's up to Council. But we felt we needed to bring this to Council and, and get your feedback. And again, we'll be following the, the state law. So, if Council accepts, we advertise it for the upset bid.
Well, that, that was my question for Graham, which is, and I know it's late, and everybody wants to go home, doesn't want to listen to me. But my purpose, my question is, you have a state law. Are we allowed to have a city ordinance that doesn't abrogate state law, but nonetheless adds to it and says, "Well, if we're going to do this, then we also want that"? Or would state laws say, "Well, you just, you got to take whatever bid comes to you"?
No. And even if you go through the upset bid process, you can reject all the bids. I mean, you can go through this process and say, "Well, let's see if there's other people interested and see if it gets upset." And then if it doesn't, usually you're not satisfied with it. You can reject it at the end. So, you can not accept it now, or you can reject it at the end, or you can accept it now and decide whether to accept it at the end or not.
Any other questions from council?
So, what does staff recommend that we do with this, with this particular piece of property? Is there any reason to not go on and make the motion?
So, when I circulated the request through multiple city departments, the, you know, I, I think there was no real interest in, in maintaining the property so long as we had that easement maintenance. That's also a consideration. When we own these properties, it also means that we have to maintain them. And I know that can be, you know, a burden for our public works staff to take their mowers and, you know, mow a little strip of grass every now and then.
And the, the owner is aware that there's nothing that can really be done with that? It's just adjacent to his property?
That's right. I mean, I have referred him to Development Services to understand that, that there's limited potential for that site and, and developing it. So, he's aware of that.
So, would it be okay with staff if we just go on and move on?
If Council's comfortable with that, yes, we'd recommend. And the conversations that we've had internally, we just don't see a use for that. You have a property owner that is interested. It goes through the, the process and comes back to, to Council. So-
Okay.
So, I'll go on and make that motion unless-
Yes, please.
Graham, did you have any, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I was just, I forgot what the tax value was, so I was looking at that. I, I would add that, that there's, I guess, the only other value the city gets out of it is a survey of the property over its easement. Right now, we have a, a utility line over this property without any recorded easement. That doesn't mean we can't operate the utility line. But this would, as part of this, we would get the benefit of having that sort of preserved in, in the record. So, it's some added benefit to the purchase price.
Okay.
The only other thing I'll say to Councilmember Post's point, you know, we don't get a lot of these requests. We do have property throughout the city, but I think it, stepping back now and seeing how this one goes, learning from it, what changes would we want to make to bring back to Council? That's something we could do.
I'm happy to accept the motion.
Is it okay with the motion?
Yes, please.
Then I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution supporting the upset bid process for the sale of 24 acres identified on Tax Map 016, parcel 209, located at 124 North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue.
You meant .24 acres, not 24.
What did I say?
You said 24 acres.
Okay, should I, I'm sorry. 1.24. I'm sorry.
Zero point.
Yeah, okay. 0.24 acres. Sorry, I should have my glasses on.
Friendly amendment.
I missed, I missed it. Okay.
24 acres would be three city blocks.
Good deal.
The motion is, is written.
Yeah, there we go. We have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes. Thank you, Hannah. Appreciate it. And yes, David, to clarify, I think all the, every item on here is as important as the ones that were at 6:30. So, don't not ask questions, because every item is equally important on our agenda. So, don't, don't think that just because it's late. So, moving on to item number 21. Council to consider authorizing the city manager to approve a purchase order to Interior Systems, Inc., in the amount of 1,008, oh, something, $182,465.15 for the purchase of furniture for Fire Station 3. This item is included in the 2425 budget and the purchase will be made from a North Carolina state contract, statewide contract, 5610A for furniture. Our presenters are Fire Chief Bob Parnell and Finance Director Wade Furchess on the sideline. So, welcome, Chief.
I am honored, Mayor, and Council, to be before you. I will run through this because it's really quite benign, I think. From the strategic plan, we want to complete the public safety projects, including construction of Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 is 75% complete at least. We're rounding the third curve. And here we are. We need to outfit it with the proper equipment and furniture. So, we ask that you consider allowing the city manager to sign a purchase contract for the price that you mentioned, $182,000. This purchase contract is part of a, a total planning of Fire Station 3. What you see before you is a picture of Fire Station 6. This is similar furniture, of similar approach, that we did for Fire Station 6 in 2020. It's rugged furniture. I will add that it's not opulent. We, we stay away from opulent. But we do have rugged furniture. Station 3's furniture is going to be wood grain. You see before you metal at Station 6. It's an industrial-type building. Station 3 on Haley Avenue is a little bit different in its design. And this was all professionally laid out by the architects and the vendor that helped us with this furniture and equipment. It's a similar approach. We made sure that doors don't conflict with chairs, don't conflict with outlets, don't conflict with the desks and those kind of things. So, Station 3 has, we're equipping some, there's more rooms than 39 rooms, but we're equipping 39 rooms with this bid. Offices, education areas, EOC, even, I mentioned to our staff that's even down to the benches that are inside the restrooms. So, it's, it's completely furniture and equipment. We are bringing a lot of furniture and equipment from other stations as we move it. From the old Station 3, some of that is moving over as well. But for sake of time, we simply ask that you authorize the city manager to approve the purchase order. It is in excess of $100,000. He couldn't do it by himself. He needs authorization from Council. That money is in the budget from the project. It's been projected to be this. We just need Council to consider and sign off. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions? Or Mr. Green, anything to add?
May I?
Any questions, Council? I would entertain a motion.
Motion to authorize city manager to approve a purchase order to Interior Systems Incorporated in the amount of $182,465.15 for the purchase of furniture for Fire Station Number 3.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion passes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
I do have one question there, or clarifying. This is something that's in the budget. It's furniture. We need furniture. I get it. But we discussed, and I, I talked to city manager about this. Like, these are items that I feel like the city manager should be able to do, but it's because we have a threshold on what he can approve. I would not request a conversation tonight. When in a future council meeting, let's discuss what our city manager's threshold is for decisions he's running. You know, he's the CEO of this business, and everything has gone up in price. So, maybe we don't have the right price tag to things at this point in time. That just, I mean, your furniture, I mean, you know, I'm excited to see pictures of it, don't get me wrong. But I think I would welcome a conversation in the future about that, if we could look at what seems to be- if we could look at what seems to be maybe a better price tag for you to review. So thank you for that. Thank you, Chief. Item number 22. Council to consider awarding a one-time Burn Criminal Justice Innovative Grant in the amount of $55,000 to the West End Neighborhood Organization, presenting Police Chief Patrick Smith. Welcome, PJ.
Thank you, Mayor Sheffield, Mayor Protem, members of council. This is under the threshold that's set, but it is overall over the threshold if you look at the entirety of the grant. And because we have new members on council tonight, I just kind of wanted to give a quick history update of where we're at and where we hope to end with the last moving piece or just close out. So the BCGI model focuses on three, or excuse me, four different strategies, place-based strategies and locations to build partnerships, to build and enhance trust with the community, community engagement, and it is data-driven. So those are the four pillars in the model of the Burns Criminal Justice Innovative Grant, BCGI, which you hear the acronym quite often or refer to as the West End Grant. We were, it was announced in October 2021 that the city was awarded the $800,000 grant. Throughout the year of 2022, we started doing the data collection piece in the environmental survey data. A lot of, the year of 2023 was where community members got together through a series of different meetings and developed six actionable items, and the action plan was written and submitted. It was at the end of 2023, beginning of, excuse me, at the beginning of 2024, when the action plan was approved and we got things into motion, and a lot has transpired moving forward to where the grant will end in September of 2025 this year, and we'll do the closeout. And it says October on here of 2025 that the grant will be, we will submit our final report to the BJA. We've been planning that as we go. We have until December. We have 90 days, but we want to have it closed out by October, November. So in December, we're sitting here showing you a big wrap-up. So just quickly, here's the six actionable items that was agreed upon by the community to focus on youth and family programming, small business growth, beautification, visioning, which is complete, the technical assistance to public safety responses, which is SEPTED, which is about 75% complete, and West seeding and getting a West End organization put together for sustainability of long term for this grant. If you look at it a little bit closer, the first goal one was obtained and achieved last summer through the Summer Grant Awards that we partnered with United Way. And Goals 2 and 3 are currently taking place and moving on. Goals 5 is getting, is in progress. I'm going to show you the progress line here in just a minute. And then the last to the West End Neighborhood Organization helps obtain Goals Number 4 and 6 as far as the actionable items. This is just a quick overview of the 23 nonprofits that were awarded for summer programs last year. And at the end of this month, you guys should probably be getting a invitation to the wrap-up for the summer grants because that could also come back into play by way of maybe one or two of these being resurfaced through the summer this year. The beautification is in progress. Was a total of $70,000 for SASSAD grants that is being handled by our planning department, Street Common, which you've heard, the roundabout. Yeah, we got some mixed reviews on that and the feedback. But also, Street Common also is some of the painting and things like that, but that was all part of that. And then for the Vanderford Basin, $15,000 put about five of that for like fence upgrades and landscaping and such. Camera lighting, just still in progress. Duke Energy, it has been ordered. I don't think they've started upgrading the lights yet. But the cameras, we have started putting out cameras. I think Thursday of last week, cameras went up on a Willesboro Road where in a location that we've had crime. We want to make sure when we place cameras that we are not cross-facing any cameras where we already have existing cameras. But we did put, they started work last week on a Willesboro Road. I don't know, there's several moving pieces to it because you've got power, you've got network, and then you've got the actual hardware and installation running into it. But that is, and we will continue to identify other locations that are needed for the safety concerns of the neighborhood. But tonight, I bring for you the last piece, and it's the sustainability piece of the West End Neighborhood Organization seed money. They have developed, they developed a nonprofit agency that will contribute to the sustainability of activities and management and the community coordination. They've already got their 501(c)(3) established, and they have their board members in place. And here's just a list of their board members. You can see the chair, the secretary, treasurer, and then the board members listed below. This is just some examples of some of the things that they will use this money to. This is not all. This is just some, as far as tutoring, life skill planning, working with the youth, building a West End Youth Council, financial literacy. And, you know, this goes, and not only with the financial literacy, some other places that I didn't, I tried to get in as few slides as I could, but some other resources that they'll provide assistance will be through the Salisbury CDC, Rowan Helping Ministries, the Department of Social Services, and so forth and so on. This is the sustained piece of this grant because after this seed money, there's no more money that's going to be, and there's no guarantee that we would have this grant in the future. That this West End organization could reapply for this grant on their own with support from us and not be the city. Out of, I think it's something like 77 awards. We are one of 12 or 13 actual agencies that got it versus neighborhoods partnering with agencies. So what I'm recommending tonight from staff is council approve the city manager to sign a one-time sub-award agreement using the BCGI grant funds for non-renewable sub-award in the amount of $55,000. Any questions?
Mr. Green, anything to add?
Nothing to add, Mayor. Chief did a great job.
Council, any questions about this?
I could just say, I'm very excited about this. I think it's wonderful, and I'm just very grateful to all of the people that have worked so hard to make this reality. And I think it all sounds great.
I'll just add to closing in this. This is one of those things that it's been a long time in the making. It's been a lot of hard work with a lot of people. Motions have been up, motions have been down, there's been sweat, a lot of coming-togetherness. This is something that we look at four years from now, six years from now, and say, I'm glad we did that.
Congratulations to everyone.
So if council is okay with the city manager?
So I'll make a motion unless there's any more discussion.
No, I think we all agree. It's, this has been great. This has been a great thing, and I look forward to what we know keeps on doing. Seen them at events already, so I'm excited to keep it moving forward. So go ahead.
Okay. And with that, I'm happy to make the motion to authorize the city manager to award a one-time Brian Criminal Justice Innovation Grant sub-grant award in the amount of $55,000 to the West End Neighborhood Organization.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Chief. Yes, this is a good one. No, we're excited. This is a good stuff. And while you're here, Chief, let's move on to item number 23. Council to consider replacing the city's current parking software with Passport, Inc., to better meet parking enforcement needs and to proceed with collection of past due fines from 2022 until present.
And I'll explain that in a little bit more detail. First, let me introduce our downtown liaison that also is our parking specialist. And she is assigned to the local downtown area and the footprint of that. And she has done a great job in doing a lot of the research on this parking. And you'll hear me mention, as we get into this presentation, when we first purchased our current, our current system, we did not have a parking specialist to do the research. So it was purchased with people that were not experts in parking control. We now have one, and she's done an outstanding job. So the objection tonight is to introduce and review a new parking system and discuss the benefits of the proposed, that are proposed with the new system. As you mentioned, the collections piece and why the city needs to upgrade and not renew with our current provider. This is just to look at the violation for the last four months of 2024. So this is from December back. There were 652 total violations. And you kind of see that very few tollways, very few 25-foot-a-corner, but where it really starts to pick up is left curb and overtime parking. That's where you get over the 200. So in four months, we reached 652 violations. That was just in downtown, just by Tess. On a day, this is just her daily average work workload. So about four and a half, five hours, she actually spends out on, in the downtown area, scanning and writing tickets and actually taking enforcement. She spends about two and a half to three hours a day in the office processing what she has scanned. So her day is kind of split. And then there's a few, less than an hour that's spent daily on appeals and so forth and miscellaneous paperwork. So looking at our current service provider, just a quick, and I want to, I'm not going to, we're going to summarize this, so I'm not going to dwell on this slide too much. I just want to put out, point out a few things. We initially paid $23,000 with the thought that we were going to have a reoccurring fee after that of $7,200. They are headquartered out of country. They're not local to our country. But I will say, when we do get in touch with them, which is very rare, their customer service is great when we get in touch with them. We've already had to replace our LPR system has a camera. They do offer one camera with their system. We've had to replace it once. And another thing I need to put is they put a limit on the number of violations that you can write a year. That comes into play. After 1,000 violations, we have to pick up, the charge goes up for each violation that we write. And you saw in four months with a full-time parking specialist, we had 652. They don't offer any type of online payment, online collection. They don't automatically generate collection debt letters. All that has to be done by Tess. There's connected connectivity issues, and because of them being out of country and when the system was down, we had to rely heavily on our IT to work with Tess to try to get some of what we could in our system working. So there's just a summary of basically everything that I just said. It crashes a lot. It's difficult to use. There's additional cost for online pay. It doesn't have any city logo. There's a limitation on violations. We're paying annual service fees for things that we don't use, but then we have to pay extra for things that we actually need. So the 72, 25, there were some hidden fees, and I'm going to show a comparison to that here in just a minute. One thing that may not seem too relevant, but is very important in time-saving, it forces us to use two different sets of databases, meaning that this current software is not integratable with our police department's record management system. And you'll, and I'll point this out again. So every time Tess writes a ticket, she has to print two tickets, one for the violator, and then one for her when she goes back and has to manually enter into our record management system. Also, with the growing, with the city growing, this current service provider is not sustainable for the growth in the city and the parking needs of the city. So what we did, we looked at Passport. Now, this is not, and I did work with finance. This is not an item that we would have to have to get three bids on and choose the lowest if they were, if it needed. But we did it anyway, and Passport came in at the lowest. It's a one-time initial cost, which we would use salary savings to purchase, of $46,752.34. And then we have an annual fee, and I'm going to show you that breakdown, of $15,124 a year. But that goes from one camera to four cameras. They're headquartered out of Charlotte. They do, so bigger cities, Charlotte, High Point, Greensboro, all use Passport. The only thing we would have to purchase in addition would be the SIM card, $400. Not worried about that. There's no violation limitations. I can off, we can actually give access currently. We only have allowed one user on our current service provider, but I can give access to Passport to all my police officers. So we can enforce parking and go into the Passport system citywide. So if it's a residential neighborhood that's own residential parking and there's parking violations, the officer can use that. So it could increase the number of parking, or the availability of parking enforcement to be for the entire department at no additional cost. It does have online available QR code. If somebody gets a ticket, they can scan it. They can go online, they can pay it, they can download the app. If they have a parking violation that's due, this company builds out a website. We can send reminders, but they automatically generate, they automatically generate 30-day collection letters if they are not paid within those 30 days. In addition to that, after 60 days, this company is also partnered with the DMV. So if you don't pay your parking ticket within 60 days, it gets turned over to the Department of Motor Vehicles, and you cannot renew your tag until your parking tickets are paid. And once again, like I said, there's no, there's no limit on users. So Passport summaries everything I just said. Tire stem GPS photos, I'll tell you where that comes into play. Right now, our current system cannot distinguish between 15-minute parking or two-hour parking. The GPS on this system can, you can actually flag, if somebody comes in and buys a permit for a permitted parking space, you can go into GPS and say, this is a permitted parking space. And when they buy that permit, we can enter their tag number, and it will block that out, and it won't, it won't flag them because it knows it's the right car that's permitted and parked there. Now, if somebody's parked in that spot that the tag does not register to, it would flag it. Also, if you park in a, let's just say you park in front of City Hall at 9:00 a.m. and you leave at 9:15, but Tess has already come by and scanned you, and you come back at 1:30 in the afternoon, and she comes back and it sees your car, the four cameras picks up, and where it says STEM, it'll show that the tire stem that the car has moved, has left, and has had comeback, has come back. Yes, there could be some appeals on that, but not as many as we get now. Ultimately, this could save 20 hours a week in manpower because she's not having to process and manually enter twice. So if we just look at them side by side, I said yes to customer service to the current service provider because they are very nice when you do get them on the phone. They do have a database, but it's not compatible with our database. And the only no really for Passport is we have to purchase a SIM card for Tess, but that's $496 and it's one-time purchase, and we can reuse. Everything else is, you know, good reviews and used by major cities. So if you look at it side by side, here's the hidden fees. Currently, what we're paying reoccurring yearly is $13,275 when you figure in the hidden fee on the current service provider. What we'll be paying with the Passport with four cameras and a better system, just a little bit more than, just shy of $16,000. But if we go back and we look at, if we're looking at since 1999, if we look since 1999, we have over $100,000 in unpaid parking violations. But.
That was five bucks a hit.
Yeah, well, no, that's 15. Well.
It used to be five.
It used to be five, yes, but at a certain point where we changed it, it went to 15. So yes.
Everybody, everybody that ever lived here.
Yeah, but, but we're not recommending going back that far. I will say that I put this in here as a cost saving because for me to print 50 parking ticket books, because we could get access this to the fire department because the fire department does go around and write tickets for fire zone parking. But for me to print 50 parking ticket books, it's $5,000. So I think that's a savings of having to print less books. So while the current system's improved, it's not. While the current system's improved, it's not meeting the, it's not meeting what we need. We can save twenty hours a week. Um, I said a hundred thousand dollars, but I'm not recommending. And I just give the example, if we write two thousand parking tickets a year, uh, that generates fifty thousand dollars and basically the system pays for itself. Um, so this is my recommendation that we authorize the city manager to enter to agreement with Passport, me not renewing with our current service provider, uh, which is instant savings in itself. Uh, purchase the new software and transfer the overdue accounts for the years twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and what we've accrued already in twenty twenty-five to Passport for collections. Any questions? I tried to be thorough and quick.
Counsel, any questions? Got the experts right here. Tess, what do you think? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to compliment and thank Tess. Tess has, uh, pretty much thankless job, writing tickets. Folks are not happy, but she is professional, courteous. And I hear folks say, I got a ticket and she took time to explain it or answer my questions and she does not play favorites. I got a ticket yesterday. I've already paid the chief. The chief tells me he has received a ticket, so, um, uh, thank you Tess for what, what you do. I know it's a difficult job, but thank you. You do a good job.
She tested all the research on this and got it for me. She actually went and spent a couple of days at other agencies and spent some time in Charlotte riding with their parking enforcement and nothing but, but good reviews.
So Tess, I would say you're giving it a thumbs up.
Yes, ma'am. I, I couldn't find somebody to give bad feedback. They're using it in Nashville, Raleigh, and I've talked to everybody that heads up their programs. I spent the time down in Charlotte. Nobody had anything to say. Charlotte was going on their twelfth year, renewing it.
I would say I've had more complaints, um, since you've been employed here. And, and that's a good thing, especially when it's friends. That parking lady, man. I think it's great though, and I think, uh, personally, I don't think it's about the money that's invested versus the money we're gonna gain. What it is, it's about making, continuing to make downtown a welcoming place. People have access to parking like they should. People aren't abusing the system because they know it's been insufficient, for lack of a better word, for a little while. And, um, you know, it'll get everybody doing the right thing. Um, Jim? Get your ticket. Counsel, any comments or ready for a motion?
Make a motion to authorize city managers execute an agreement with Passport, Inc. in the amount of forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and an additional fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars annually in operating costs for parking enforcement needs and to proceed with collection of past due fines owed from only two thousand twenty-two until the present.
Correct.
Twenty-three was a big year. I saw that was a strategic year, huh?
So we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for your research and your work, Tess. It's appreciated. Businesses and citizens alike, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, moving on to, uh, number twenty-four. Counsel to consider appointments to various boards and commissions. Connie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, we just have two, um, two commissions that are actually have vacancies. And the first one is the Housing and Agnesy Commission, and we need one member. And our council liaison is council member Post.
And we've had an application from Jackie Harris, uh, that the, uh, commission has approved. So I was nominating Jackie Harris to fill the vacancy.
I, I think that'd be an excellent appointment. She was at the Renters, um, Expo this weekend, so, uh, she's already been involved. So, uh, we have a motion to appoint Jackie Harris to the Housing Agnesy Commission. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Welcome, Jackie. Thank you for your volunteerism. Thank you, David. Connie?
Mayor, our second board is the Planning Board and you have, uh, two vacancies. I'm not sure if council's ready to make a recommendation or if we want to hold off for a little bit.
I'll, I'll fully own, I've not had a chance to review those, uh, applicants, so I, I can state that. If any of you all have, then I'd welcome. So just hold off until, okay, Connie, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. And, and that's it.
About a month. Deeply engaged in real estate here.
Uh, any other boards or commissions, Connie?
Ama'am.
Okay. All right. Let's see. Moving on to city attorney's report. Graham?
I emailed you about this last week, but I'll just, uh, say publicly that we have closed on the Empire Hotel and I wanted to publicly thank the DSI board and the, uh, developers of, uh, Phase One of the Empire and with an option on Phase Two. Everything's moving forward. This is gonna free up, uh, DSI to focus on downtown and I think streamline negotiations in the future, so all good news. Again, I sent you that. Just wanted to thank, uh, those folks publicly. That's it for my report.
And thank you, Graham, for sticking with that and making that happen. Great decision. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Uh, city manager report. Mr. Green?
Counsel, thank you for your patience tonight. Four-hour-plus meeting. I will remind you, the last several meetings have been an hour or so, so, um, thank you. Appreciate your patience. A lot of good items, uh, on the agenda tonight. And I did just want to mention, uh, from some of the public comments about Sales Road. Reminder, that is a state road, uh, but city staff is working hard. We had the, uh, zoning changes on tonight. Uh, hopefully at the next meeting, you're gonna have your traffic calming policy back that has been out for public comment. Uh, I know Jared, Wendy and others are working closely with the DOT. So I just wanted to let council know, uh, and the folks that are speaking that staff is, is working hard to evaluate and, um, address the concerns. Uh, I did want Jared to mention one thing, uh, quickly. We need council approval on, on a parking extension for downtown.
Yes, uh, mayor, mayor pro temp, city council, uh, appreciate y'all hanging in there. And, um, I wanted to bring up a right-of-way use permit at two oh-one South Main Street, which is just up the street in the same block at the corner of South Main and Fisher Street. The applicant had a original right-of-way use permit for two weeks, which is granted by, or I guess, uh, the city can, can present that and, uh, and I guess go forward with that. But after two weeks, we have to come to you. So there is a four, or a four-day permit at the old property owner's requesting for asbestos removal. That is the, that is again, the reason they're extending pass and they also want to come back later for a longer period of time. But just to keep the process moving for this property owner, we want to, uh, advocate for, uh, a four-day permit to be extended.
So just extending the parking for four more days to complete the asbestos removal and then staff will work to evaluate any fu- future needs and bring those back.
And there hadn't been any complaints that we're aware of.
Counsel, any questions on that?
Counsel, okay with that?
So do we need to make a motion?
Please.
So, uh, I just need a motion to extend the right-of-way use permit for four days for two oh-one South Main Street.
No mood.
Have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, Jared. Mayor, uh, council, just my last item. I remember when my daughter was young, Harry Potter book came out and it was very hot. We had to preorder. It was folks waiting in line and I have not seen interest in any publication since that time until now. And I hope everyone has gotten their copy of the Salisbury, the magazine. I see council has. This is the hottest thing going now. There is a feature and nice article and picture on our own, uh, fire chief celebrating his forty years with the city of Salisbury. I hear this item is already out, so, uh, we're fortunate to get a copy. But chief, congratulations. Nice article. Well-deserved. Thank you.
So it's sold out and, uh, Chief Parnell will be, uh, signing autographs at, starting at eleven PM tonight out back. Um, we should be done by then. No, I'm just kidding. Chief, congratulations. Great article. Really is. Thank you for sharing, Jim. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Are you sure?
I'm sure.
You sure?
I'm positive.
All right. Well, thank you. Uh, we'll now turn it over to council comments. Any comments from council members? S K's like, we can, big no. David, you got something?
I just want to say congratulations again to Public Works and the whole staff. I mean, you guys were amazing tonight and you're amazing every night, but, I mean, everybody chipped in tonight and showed what a fabulous team you have. And I feel inadequate being here and, but lucky, you know, to be able to watch what you do from this perspective.
Thank you, David. Carlton, you got anything? Mayor Pro Temp's comments. You got anything?
Um, yeah, just a reminder, uh, third annual minority business trade show on April twenty-fourth from four to seven at Limstone College Hospitality, Hospitality Center, uh, is taking place. And, um, the last day for sponsors is April fourth.
Thank you. Is that it?
All right. I have about forty minutes' worth of Cory Booker-ing to do here. First of all, I'd like to say, uh, there was a lot going on this past week and weekend. First of all, I got the opportunity to attend Catawba honoring their sixty years of commemorating, um, their courage and resilience and determination, students and families who paved the way for equality and inclusion into educational communities. So sixty years ago, Catawba became a non-segregated college. So, uh, it was a great event. Uh, council member Clutz was there. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim McLaughlin was there. Uh, it was just a, it was a lovely event, a great thing to celebrate. Uh, and, and, and proud of Catawba for recognizing that. Also, um, this past weekend, if you didn't get a chance to go to the Rowan County, uh, Community Events Center out at what we would all call the Old Mall, man, you missed out. What a, wow. Congratulations to them and to our whole county and every municipal in Rowan County. They have just done an amazing job out there. It's, it's beautiful. They had the whole place opened up. Um, it's something to go see. So please, if you get a chance, go see that and congratulate anybody who is, um, gonna be connected to that. It's just, they, they did an amazing job and I'm very proud to be in Rowan County and to see that we have stuff like that happening. Uh, also, congratulations again. Hannah mentioned it earlier. Um, the Rental Health Tenant Awareness Expo that happened this past Saturday at the same time, which might have helped the atten, you know, hurt the attendance a little bit, uh, but it was very great. It was a lot of information and a, just a great expert panel answering questions. People were there that directly impacted them and they had questions. And I would like to thank the Post for covering both of those events very well, uh, to let the rest of the community who missed out to see those two great events this weekend. And then as a board member of Smart Start Rowan, I did get to attend their, um, Shirley P. Ritchie Champion Event last week. Uh, I mention this because their number one award was given to a person very near and dear to everybody across Rowan County. And that's, uh, Mayor Mary Pons of Granite Quarry. She was recognized for her dedication to young children. And I, I can't think of a kinder person or more deserving person than Mary Pons. So if you get a chance and see her, please congratulate her. She was overwhelmed, to say the least. And now for the next forty minutes, we're gonna read the mayor's announcements and I'm gonna split this up with Harry. He volunteered too. So, uh, we have so many great things going on here. So, uh, today is the twentieth anniversary of WSRG, the Salisbury-Rowan Government Television Station, available on Hotwire Channel three ninety-four and Spectrum Cable. Channel sixteen, WSRG offers coverage of city council and county commission meetings along with other valuable community information. So congratulations to WSRG. Secondly, the Parks and Recs Department will host the nineteenth annual Touch a Truck Event on this Saturday, April the fifth, from ten AM to one PM, right here in City Hall in our back lot. Participants will have an opportunity to explore a wide variety of vehicles. There will be a low sensory, no horn siren light time from ten AM to ten thirty AM. This is a great event for all ages. Simultaneously, Downtown Salisbury, Inc. will host Ring in Spring on this Saturday, April the fifth, from eleven AM to one PM at City Hall. Participants will be able to take free photos with the Easter Bunny. Photos will be posted on the Downtown Salisbury, Inc. Facebook page following the event for a free download. And Mr. McLaughlin, can you finish mid-up?
Okay. The Salisbury Police Department and Public Arts Commission are seeking designs for this year's West End Paint the Pavement Project. The intersection of Lloyd and Hurrah Streets will be painted with designs that reflect the neighborhood's history, culture and spirit. There is no cost to enter and all materials will be supplied. A five hundred dollar stipend will be given to artists upon completion. Entries will be accepted through February, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. For more information, call seven zero four, six three eight, five two three five. And then Spring Spruce Up Week will be held April seventh through April eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. This week is designated for residential customers who have City of Salisbury garbage service. Items must be placed at the curb before seven AM on residents' regular garbage collection day. For additional information or for a list of items Public Works can and cannot collect, call seven oh four, six three eight, five two six zero. Oh, my goodness, and there's more. Then partnership with Healthy Rowan and Pedal Factory and in Obs- Observation of Public Health Week and the Move with the Mayor Initiative, the public is invited to join Mayor Sheffield for a guided bike tour of the city of Friday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-five at six PM. Bicyclists will depart from Bell Tower Green. The event is for beginner. Well, aren't you, aren't you advanced?
No, I'm beginner.
Beginner, beginner, friendly.
Friendly.
And all bikers are welcome. For more information, call seven oh four, eight seven zero, seven one four five. And last, Salisbury Parks and Recreation, along with Hurley Park Advisory Board, will host the annual Hurley Park Spring Celebration on Sunday, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from two PM into four PM at Hurley Park. The afternoon will include the Salisbury Swing Band, character rides, a musician, snacks and much more. This event is free and open to the public.
Thank you for your help, Harry. Uh, again, I echo what Jim said earlier. Thank you, everybody. It's been a long night. A ton of work is done tonight, a lot of pre-work for the future meeting, so thank you all for your patience. And yeah, it's just us left. I knew nobody would hang in there. So, uh, everybody had a great night. Oh, no, there's Clyde. We got our, our continual supporter back there. With that, I would happily accept a motion to adjourn. Have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye and bye.